Test.
Do that. Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight. Well, this will be these council orders. The city council meeting for Monday, December 1st, 2025. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, Amanda.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Shannon Derby.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Doug Brandt. Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shimalunas.
Here.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Wawuski. Darla Leclerc.
Here.
All present.
Okay, we can skip over number four because we're all here. We do have Sean that is joining us, the attorney that is joining us on the phone. Tonight, number five, we have introduction of invited guests. Chief, all ears.
Thank you, counsel. So over the year, we've had a little bit of movement within the PD. Kind of been holding everything until now. As we reported last meeting, we kind of wanted to wait until the resolution for Karen Ellison-Peter and her 32 years of service, which was fantastic, and we wanted to separate that from the next celebrations. First of all, with the movement, in addition to Ellison-Peter's retirement, we had a drug metro officer assigned. So that created an opening in our sergeant position. So with that, I'm proud to announce Brad Dimick will be our next, or has been promoted as our next sergeant of patrol. Brad Dimick began part-time in October of 2017, later moving to full-time in January of 2018. And as of September 14th, 2025, he was that first sergeant promoted to patrol. So with that, I'd like to ask him to come up here, and I believe his mother is going to pin him. In addition to those services that I mentioned, he's also been a valued field training officer, and he's also a member of our newly formed warrant service team.
Congratulations. It's good to see you as an adult and doing these things. Awesome.
I appreciate it.
So again, with that, and Ellison-Peter's retirement, we had a little bit of movement there. One of those being Leander Men. Leander Men was promoted as our next promoted patrol sergeant. Leander Men began with our department February 16th of 2022 when he was hired part-time. Later in May 22nd of 22, he was hired full-time, and as of November 16th, he was promoted to sergeant. He's also a valued field training officer. He's our bike patrol coordinator and really our mechanic as well, which is a plus. And he's also on our warrant service team that's newly created. So again, congratulations, and his girlfriend's going to pin him. And now our two sergeants, if you want to step over here with our city clerk, she'll swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Move it after me. I state your name.
I, Mary Mary.
Somalis, where I support the Constitution of the United States.
Somalis, yeah, this is what works Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Now faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of police sergeant.
Of police sergeant.
For the City of Two Rivers.
For the City of Two Rivers.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And I'm proud to announce Jacob Schweigl has promoted to that position as of November 16th, 2025 as well. He began his career nine years with a combination of Michicott and Cleveland PD before being hired with Two Rivers in May of 2023. June 11th of '23, he promoted to sergeant, and beginning 2024, he became our K-9 handler. So he's going to continue that role as our K-9 officer, as well as a team leader for our current warrant service team. So again, congratulations to Jacob Schweigl. His wife and son will be pinning him.
Raise your right hand, Peter. I, Jacob Froy.
Jacob Froy.
Somalis, where I support the Constitution of the United States.
Somalis, where I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And I faithfully discharge the duties.
And now faithfully discharge the duties.
Of police attendant.
Of police attendant.
For the City of Two Rivers.
For the City of Two Rivers.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
No, this is a time where family members will rush out of here, but you're more than welcome to stay. Let's see, on to our fourth guest, Connie Hendries for the Manitowoc County Democratic Party.
Well, first of all, I have good news for everybody. I woke up with laryngitis this morning, so I won't be talking very long. I'm here this evening to speak about ICE, and although we've had no incursions into Two Rivers, it's a little bit better to be prepared before things happen than after the fact. And I've given you all a copy of a letter from Dan Biss, who's the mayor of Evanston, Illinois, and it outlines what that city did to prepare for the ICE raids and what they are doing to make sure that things are done as properly as possible. They involve the police department. And I know that all the federal law and federal authority always supersedes local authority, and we know that. But there are still things that local cities can do to make sure that things are handled correctly. And I don't believe, according to Chief Minor, that the Two Rivers Police Department has had any contact from ICE or from Homeland Security, but they have, for years, have had courtesy calls from US Marshals. But the US Marshals are warranted. They come with a warrant, and they're judicial warrants. They're not administrative warrants like ICE has. And they make sure that people get due process according to the US Marshal regime. So I just think if you would like to discuss this at some point, we know that there are some abuses that have been taking place in other areas of the country. In fact, even in Manitowoc. And if you would like to discuss this among yourselves, we know that about 70% of all the people who are rounded up have had no criminal convictions. We thought at the beginning of all this that we were told by the federal government that all of the, excuse me, that we were told by the federal government that this would be sending back to their home countries the worst of the worst, the rapists, the murderers, the drug dealers, when in fact, that is not happening, and people are being denied due process to prove that they are not criminals, particularly violent criminals. Only about 8% of all the people who've been rounded up are actually violent criminals. And yes, we'd sure like to get rid of those, but not the folks who are just trying to support their families. So thank you very much. And I would appreciate if you would read the letter from Mayor Biss of Evanston, Illinois. He was, I actually, I called him. I saw him on an interview on TV, and then I called him, and he called me back a few days later, and he said that he was sorry for getting back to me. I said, "I didn't expect you to get back to me at all, frankly," but he did. And a very, very concerned mayor and trying to keep his community safe, which is what we all want. We have a wonderful community here, and we like to keep it as safe as possible. So thank you very much for your time, and I'm sorry for my voice. Most people who know me know me. No, I have no trouble speaking. Today's an unusual day. Thank you.
On to number six, public hearing. Tonight, we have two of them. The first one is a public hearing for an ordinance to amend municipal code section 10-1-15i 3 entitled Height and Area Exceptions to Regulate Fence Setbacks in the Front Yard. Just a quick summary of what this is about is the proposed city code amendment would formally establish a 36-inch setback requirements for fences located in front yards, clarifying where fences may be placed to ensure visibility, safety, and consistency across properties in residential zoning districts. Residents are encouraged to attend warrant about the proposed changes and share feedback tonight, which is why we're having a public hearing. This did come from the Plan Commission, right, Adam?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Just want to make sure that was clear. So since this is a public hearing, I will call or make three calls. If you wish to talk about this, please step up to the podium on your left and state your name and address for the record. I will open up the first call about this particular item. Seeing no one, I will close the first call and open up the second call. Seeing no one, I'll close the second call and open up the third and final call. Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council, looking then for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Well, any council discussion? Yes, Bonnie?
There was this one in each screening. This is page seven of the packet. Screening or fencing in the rear side yards may extend to the property line so long as it is located in a manner that allows the owner to maintain the screening or fencing. You know, the thing is, if you're not going to put it on the property line, that's what I don't understand. If you're not going to put it on the property line, does that mean that the owner of the fence can go on to the other side anytime they want and be on his neighbor's property?
Oh, it does not mean that.
What?
No, it does not mean that.
Side yard faces the street.
What?
On a corner lot, the side yard faces the street.
Well, this is just about corner lots?
No. It would apply to corner lots and non-corner lots, but it does not give the neighbor permission to walk onto the adjacent property unless that neighbor grants them permission to. Comes with a unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission.
Bonnie, or do you have any questions?
Part of, I just wanted, it never says to put the fence on the property line. That's what's bothering me. Because if it's not on the property line, it can be a problem.
It's meant to say that you can. Before, you weren't able to put it on the property line. Now you're able to.
Help, Bonnie? Okay. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, we'll do a roll call vote. Amanda.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brandt. Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wawuski.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to B. The second public hearing tonight is for conditional use permit for Starbucks located at 1509 Washington Street for the operation of a drive-through submitted by Frontview REIT, which is the owner. Just a quick summary, public hearing regarding a conditional use permit request for new owner of the Starbucks at 1509 Washington Street. The applicant, which is Frontview, is seeking approval to own the restaurant at this location. There's no change in use request for this property, only a change in ownership. This again came through the Plan Commission yesterday. Okay. So again, this is a public hearing, so if you wish to address the council about this particular item, please step up to the podium on your left and state your name and address for the record. I will make three calls. You have three shots to do it. I will now open up the first call. Seeing no one, I'll close the first call and open up the second call. Seeing no one, I will close the second call and open up the third and final call. Seeing no one, I will close the third and final call and bring it back to council and looking for a motion. Yes, Bill?
As recommended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Doug. Any council discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote again. Amanda.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brandt. Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wawuski.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for that. On to number seven, input from the public. If you wish to address the council this evening, please step up to the podium on your left, and you may state your name and address for the record. Please be aware that you have three minutes to address the councils so we can get through all the people that wish to speak tonight. The council may ask questions of you about the topic, but cannot discuss issues raised or make any decisions since the topic is not a posted agenda item, unless, of course, you're talking about something that's on the agenda tonight, which we will then talk about it when we get to that point. So I'll now open up for input from the public.
My name is Stanley Palmer, and I'm a 10-year Leicester Library. I'm going to, I'm going to talk as fast as I can now. Okay. The Leicester Public Library, LPL, is requesting a 2% boost in its 2026 budget. Time is important, so I will be brief in these remarks. For all of these successes that LPL has accomplished, I do think that 2% is a reasonable and mild request. My brevity will concern just four topics. The first is, number one, the Leicester Public Library is one of 15 libraries, and the smallest in the USA, that was chosen by the Smithsonian Museum in Washington, DC to stage nationwide library exhibits titled World on the Move. On the timely subject of historical planetary migrations of human beings, LPL's exhibits in March and April of 2024 were highly rated and drew large audiences and many visits by public schoolchildren. Number two, Director Jeff Dawson has said LPL is nowadays much reduced from the size of staffs, some 15 or 20 years ago. Fewer workers, yes, but Jeff and his staff pulled up a national recognition for TR because of the Smithsonian Migration Exhibits. Number three, only two more now, three and four. A Wisconsin State Award for a staff member's creation of a child section within the library. It's just about every day. It's just about every day that I am near the library or coming into the parking lot, it's just full of moms and kids going to the library. And finally, number four, LPL staff don't just work in the library, they have a record of traveling to parks, public schools, and other libraries in Manitowoc County and beyond. Great, I'm within the time. Okay, thank you very much, thanks for listening.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Lisa Quistor of 3324 Adams Street, I am here tonight in support of Lester Library and 2%. The value of our, that our library provides to our community is essential in building and continuing to grow a strong community. We all know, you know, the library has lots of books, but it's much more than that. It's really the great equalizer. When we look at our children and access to internet, to all the resources that it has, plus all the programming that it does, for us as Two Rivers to stay a literate, strong community, we have to support our library. It's essential. It really is the foundation of a city and so I'm asking you to please support the 2% for the Lester Library. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jim Bob Scoot, I live at 1800 Jefferson Street in Two Rivers, Wisconsin, Unit 206. So, I was, I went to, I know this doesn't have to do with the city of Two Rivers, but I know you guys talk with the people in Manitowoc. So, I was going to the Lincoln Christmas Light Zoo, Zoo Light Displays in Manitowoc on last week Friday and I was trying to take my electric scooter through there and they said that I, that I, it had to be like a truck or, or, or like an automobile to take it through there. And I said, "Well, I've got, I've got, just because my tires are only, you know, nine inches and, you know, truck tires are more than 20 inches," you know, "doesn't mean that I, you know, I should feel, I should feel like I should be not allowed to go through there because it's a sort of discrimination." And they were going to get $5 from me because of our donation, so I felt like I, you know, they should, you know, shouldn't have not turned me away, so Dennis, my man, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Daltke, 3727 Adams Street. And firstly, I just want to remind all the council members that city manager runs by Robert Rules of Order as well as you guys, so he must follow along with what you guys do. And that brings me to the next part. There's a lot of information that's been coming out from the city manager. Lot of it is half-truths, lot of it is not complete, lot of it is, I'm going to say fabricated. Quite frankly, some of it is just a flat-out lie and these are coming in emails and on social media. There's numbers that are manipulated, twisted, turned, and quite frankly, people are getting a little upset with it. You guys hired him, you need to rein him in. He is one step above the city clerk, he is a hired official. That's all there is to it. You guys take care of this. And I understand that there is a management person that's going to have to be coming up tonight for closed session. Quite frankly, I hope it's him. Rein him in.
Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion.
Yes, go ahead, or whoever's next.
At 1421 25th Street. When I was driving today, I've noticed this the last five years I've been here too, that Manitowoc plows the Mariners Trail and Two Rivers does not. And I know tourism is a thing that we're trying to attract, we have a new bike store in town, why don't we plow our side of the Mariners Trail? Thought, I have some ideas, I, I, I'm willing to donate ATV four-wheel drive with a plow on it if we wanted to ask the owner of the bike store if he would want to plow it. I don't know if that's something that could be done because I'm sure you're going to say there's not money to do it. So, I'm willing to be part of the solution too.
Okay, thank you. Atcha, thank you.
My name is Chantel Hoffman, I live at 2710 School Street. So, when we were at a listening session, I learned from the Hervalas that they were going to end the perpetual flower fund and I felt really bad because I was, I'm a multi-generational person that's lived here in my whole life and I go to the cemeteries a lot, I visit my, I was fortunate enough to know five out of my eight great-grandparents in my lifetime. So, I spend a lot of time at the cemeteries, I water my family's flowers and I plant flowers, but I feel bad because I know that there's people that don't have that. And people paid into a fund and they wanted that and they expected that. And we got the list from the Parks and Rec Department and I started reaching out, I had a little private group and I've, I just wanted to share some things, some of the things I've learned, you know, to get these perpetual flowers for some people, that was a big sacrifice. And like, I've had people tell me my mom was a widow and this was a huge purchase for her and because she wanted my father to be remembered. And also, like, when I was going through the names, I saw, my maiden name is Feliz and there isn't a whole lot of Felizes left anymore, but my grandpa's cousin was Stanley Feliz, him and his wife were never blessed with children, Stanley had a brain aneurysm in his 40s and I noticed that his, I didn't know that his wife had bought him perpetual flowers, but I know she died in like 2017 and she never remarried. So, I imagine that, you know, for her, that was something that was going to be very special for her and her husband. And I just think these are people who lived and worked in our community and I, we need more time. If you're going to end it, we can't crowdfund in that short of time, that kind of money. My uncle does fundraisers for Civil War, he restores Civil War graves in Manitowoc and he also does fundraisers for the flights to Washington DC. And you just, it's just not enough time, it's not enough time. And then, you know, I have to figure out, like, if we're going to do this, you know, who's going to still want this? And, you know, I actually think the city should continue to pay for it because that is what was promised to these people. I, I really would stress that because I think it's the moral thing to do, these people, we hadn't, you know, you had an agreement with them, you should continue your agreement. I could imagine if it was the actual fund and it ran out of money, totally understandable, it ran out of money, you can't, you know, but we don't know that because it's been absorbed. So, I just want to remind people that those were lives that lived in Two Rivers and, you know, kind of made our community what it is today, you know, so that's all I can say.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Corey Tous, 116 McKinley Street. According to our city manager, by 2027, we could be facing a budget shortfall of more than $600,000 simply because this year's one-time payments will no longer exist. That estimate doesn't include the increases we can reasonably expect in everyday operating costs. With that in mind, imagine asking taxpayers to spend $520,000 on a concession stand that operates roughly three months per year and nets less than $10,000 annually. Imagine being asked to support borrowing $256,000 under the assumption, without evidence, that tourism dollars will cover the loan payments and then being told residents are only being asked to contribute $130,000. All this brought forward with no council discussion, no public input, and no data demonstrating this is a responsible investment simply because a single resident delivered a sales pitch with no financial and data justification behind it. Now imagine removing a service that families paid into with the explicit promise of perpetual funding, our perpetual care flowers. And then, without discussion, proposing that residents should fundraise to cover the city's decision to cut that service. There is no guarantee that residents will be able to raise those funds and if they don't, who takes the blame? The very same residents who were asked to shoulder the responsibility for the city's broken commitment. Both the beach concession stand proposal and the perpetual flowers decision appears on tonight's voting agenda without prior discussion, slipped in quietly with the hope that nobody would notice or question it. That is not transparency, at best it is misleading. On October 6, the city council voted for staff to take the winter to investigate the costs, plans, and funding opportunities for the concession stand and to return in the spring for further council and public discussion. If we are truly heading towards a significant budget deficit, then the responsible choice is to table the concession stand project until at least 2027, when we have a clearer understanding of our financial health. I do fully support the originally identified $53,000 in upgrades to bring the building up to code. As for the perpetual flowers fund, council discussion at the work session made it clear that the city and possibly the Room Tax Commission would fully fund it for 2026, with conversations about the future to happen later. At no point was there any discussion about transferring this responsibility to residents through crowdfunding. It was a dismissed idea brought forth by the city manager. I stand before you as a tax-paying, full-time resident, asking you to please be responsible stewards of our community's resources and tax dollars. Please reject the sleight of hand that these agenda items represent. Vote to fully fund the perpetual flowers this year, honor the commitment made to families, and table the concession stand remodel until we have a stable understanding of our financial position and proven data to justify such a large investment for a building that only sees three months' use while still addressing the health code updates already proposed. Thank you.
I'm Bruce Krieger, I live at 2913 42nd Street in Two Rivers. I'm a lifelong resident of Two Rivers and I agree with the previous speaker about the pavilion over here that you guys just want to build this multimillion-dollar place and on our, on our dollars. We have a population of 11,271, which actually went down to 11,224. So, our population is actually going down. And you want to put up these immaculate places and depend on, on tourism, tourism is fine, but who does, the, the workers in, in this city and our upcoming kids and grandkids, where are they going to work? You want them to be working minimum wage jobs all their, all their life? I got other words, but it, it's incredible. And, and the businesses around here aren't paying $20 to $30 an hour for all of these people. They're, they're just not. You know, we're, we're becoming a retirement community. What we need is industry. That brings me to that situation also, okay? And that, then we have the debts from the past with this perpetual care, okay? So, okay, you have a contract with somebody, you put that out a long time ago, now it's time to pay up and keep these people due to their contract, okay? You know, after a while, you know, it's just senseless to, to just take away those funds and put them into some other jacked-up deal. You know, it's not right. That's where I come back to industry, we need industry in this town, not like you said, Mr. Manager, that, oh, people in this town just don't get it. We're, we're going to be a tourism community, exactly what you said on TV, exactly what you said on TV.
I agree with you 100%.
I agree with the other person, that he needs to be reined in. Enough is enough. So, okay, let's pay up that debt to a perpetual care for the cemeteries and let's come down the common sense for the, the pavilion at Neshoal Park. You know, I agree, you know, we like to make it nice, but hey, then i-if you want it done right away, then get donations or fundraise for it, just like you did for the community house, right? They tore down the high school to put up stupid housing units and, and nobody in this town is able to afford them, our kids and grandkids can't afford to stay there. So, where are they staying? They're staying by their parents or grandparents because they can't afford a house of their own. And yet, you're raising taxes for what? Where is it coming from? This town needs jobs. There you go.
Thank you, sir.
Bear with me, I'm not a speaker, my name is Kristy Armstrong, I'm 1719 13th Street, which, to be honest, the way things are going on Facebook, I didn't want to address my address because things are going crazy out there. People spilling all kinds of stuff on Facebook. I will say, I'm not going to mention any names, but a city council person's wife was harassed because they made the point of putting a thumbs up on one of my comments, but things are just getting crazy on Facebook. I am all for fixing up the Neshoal Beach concession stand. I know my grandkids would be more than happy to work there and I would love industry, but unfortunately, Two Rivers is not the same as what it was when I grew up. Hopefully, it'll get back, but right now, we got to get in on tourism and, and hopefully we can.
Excuse me, she has her time to speak, please, thank you.
Whatever we can get, I mean, I, I feel so bad for the bookstore in town that they lost it, unfortunately, they can't compete with Amazon, but I don't see where we're going to get anywhere if we don't bring in tourism and fix up the parks, fix up the beach, get what money we can in to bring into the businesses. Unfortunately, yes, my daughters don't live in town, they couldn't find houses in town, they had to go, but they, they come into town. We are so looking forward with my grandkids to the Cool City Christmas and all these wonderful things that we have in town. And I, I am, I try to restrain myself on Facebook because I hate that, that visitors are going to look at these websites and see the awful things that are said and criticized of our people. I have been called an idiot, a retard, what, let's see, a potato person who's fat and gets government benefits, which I do not get. I pay taxes like everybody else and I'm more than happy to pay my taxes to improve this city. And I will say, a lot of people have said that city council doesn't respond to anybody, I will say, three or four of you responded to all of my input and I am very proud of all of you. And yeah, freedom of speech, we can't do anything, but I am just sickened by what people will say about our city and I don't think it's going to get us anywhere, so. Not sure if I created any good points, but some of the last points, I will say, irritated me and I was going to keep my mouth shut, but I can't, so, thank you very much.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, city council, Mr. Cordell. My mom and dad still talk me right, it's still Mr. Cordell. My wife and I started this venture into the perpetual care flowers and we didn't think we would get the support from the citizens of this town and those who live out of town who have loved ones who are interned here. It was just amazing, the support we've got. So, from Mary Lee and I, we thank you all for coming up here and beating this drum for us. I thank the council members who have reached out to us, had conversation with us. I, I thank the members of the Recreation Advisory Board for allowing us to speak before them on this subject. I, I hope and pray that you will fully fund this fund to plant the flowers for these families. As, as you all know, that money was given and put into a pot and the, the pot was emptied. and the pot was emptied. That was not a... Like Mary Lee said before, it's not a taxpayer-funded fund. It was money that came out of their pockets and put into that fund, and all of a sudden, it was gone. And we are glad that the city kept it going. They could have probably shut it off then. Once the money was gone, who knew? But they kept it going. And in our different meetings that we've had with Mr. Cordell, and then we found out that about two months ago now that the local florists were called by the city and said, "Don't plant those flowers because we're not buying them this year." That was a shock. But I guess I keep on beating the same drum all the time. But I just want to say, please, for the memories of these families that are here, it just hurts. It just hurts. Let's just leave it at that. Thank you very much for all your communication with us. Thank you for allowing us to come here and speak our minds. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council and the public. My name is Catherine Dahlke, and I reside at 3727 Adams Street. I had comments in mind, but upon reflecting on the evening tonight, I've shifted gears a little bit. Appreciate the opportunity to address the council. And once again, I'll say, as I've said in years past, I hope my words do not fall on deaf ears and that you all remember that you have a debt and an obligation to serve the citizens of this city. You've heard many of them speak today and at previous meetings. I thought to myself, "I'm dressed in black all day. I wonder why?" I'm watching the death of this city unfold in front of me, and it's sad. The drop of residents that are coming through. Hold please. I'm entitled to my opinion. Thank you. Things have changed. This is not the city that I moved to a number of years ago. And I think there are a number of you out there in the audience or on council who would say the same. Industry has left. People have moved. People cannot afford to buy the houses that are going up for sale. Residents are moving in from out of state. Many of the street homes on my street sit vacant for half of the year, not contributing to the taxpayer base, not contributing to the utility base because they're summer homes for folks from Illinois. Tourists come in in traffic up and down our beach and leave a mess. It is what it is. You've spent many, many sessions talking about how you're going to pay for the cleanup at the beach every year and the maintenance at the beach. I appreciate the due diligence on the budget. I understand the sausage-making and the hard cuts that have to happen. I'm a library girl from when I was five years old. It guts me to see cuts having to be made at the library, but there are puts and there are takes. There are commitments that you made to the citizens, if not you, your predecessors, that are not being honored. There are things that should be not willy-nilly put up on a budget, like public transportation, that allow the people that are having to live at their parents' house, take a bus to go to another city to go to work, to make a minimum wage, be able to afford to come here and live here and spend their money here. But they're not spending their money at the tourism places. And until and unless you have done a concentrated economic development study, and I hope Mr. Sashi is able to do that in his new position, and understand what traffic is truly being driven from the beach into the stores, how much revenue is generated in order to keep those doors going, how many jobs are truly created, that due diligence has not been done. A previous speaker spoke about the impending shortfalls that we have. Please be fiscally responsible with our money and with our city. And put aside the pet projects. Focus on the needs. And at an appropriate time when you've done the due diligence, we can start to talk about the wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
David Penafather, 18921st Street. I'm just here to say I support the 2% increase for the library budget. My family moved here about 15 years ago with two young girls. What to do with two young girls? Take them to the library, check out Storytime. They met other children their age. Now they're in high school. They still have those relationships going. I just think it's amazing that that all started at our library, which has an incredible youth service staff. And then also adult services. There's so much to do with the library. Lots of books. I've found numerous things to learn about. I'm always doing crafts, and I can always search the stacks there and find what I'm looking for and things I didn't know I was looking for. So I just think that funding the library is very important to our community. It's right there on the drive as you're coming into town. It's welcoming everyone into the city. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Klein. I live at 3111 Monroe Street in Two Rivers. I'm here tonight to represent a growing number of citizens who are concerned about the lack of civility in our city of Two Rivers and beyond, especially on Facebook. As a... Pardon?
Doesn't matter. It's public input. She can talk about it.
As a Christian, I would like to preface what I'm about to share by emphasizing there are only two standards established in scripture, God and Satan's. I will leave it up to the audience to determine which ones are in play in the following scenarios. I came face-to-face with the incivility four years ago when my husband Doug ran for Manitowoc County Board, and I was campaign manager. The Herald Times reporter put together a list of questions for Doug and his opponent to answer and declare they would publish their responses. In reality, they sent the questions to his opponent, but not to Doug. When they published the opponent's answers, they stated that Doug was not responded, had not responded to the questions or their inquiries. I called the newspaper the next day to explain that Doug never received the questions. The gal I spoke with assured me she would send me the questions immediately and would publish Doug's answers upon receiving them. When she did send the questions, Doug responded, but his answers were never published, which communicated a false negative impression of Doug to the public. So we made 800 copies of Doug's answers with the above explanation and handed them to those living in District 23 during a door-to-door visit. He is now preparing to run for his third term. My personal experience with incivility occurred when I stumbled upon Two Rivers News and Information, which has recently provokingly given the new name Two Rivers News and City Hall Watch. During this time, there was a lot of acrimony going back and forth with one of the candidates running for Two Rivers Council and his wife. As they debated the future of Two Rivers with residents, I made a few comments that did not align with their perspective, and it went south after that. During this time, I attended a couple of meetings to educate myself on the issues and asked some questions for the sake of clarification. I was offered some suggestions. The last meeting I attended, I was approached by Greg Buckley and Mark Bitner, who I had not met up to this point. As a result of our conversation, I put together a three-and-a-half-page letter outlining the vision I proceed for Two Rivers. Having visited Two Rivers numerous times each year since 1978 and now living here since 2014, I wanted to assist in making Two Rivers reach its deserved potential. After receiving and reviewing my letter, I had a two-hour interview and was offered a position on the plan commission upon approval by the city council. After praying about it, I decided to accept the nomination and was unanimously approved. And that is when the incivility began with a vengeance. What I didn't know at the time was that a group of individuals wanted someone else on the plan commission. All kinds of defaming and accurate accusations were leveled against me, including that I was not qualified. To quell the accusations, I put out my full resume three times. I was then accused of padding it. It quickly became clear that no matter what I said, this group was not going to be satisfied. I also quickly discovered that I wasn't the Lone Ranger. Anyone in a position of leadership, such as city council, plan commission, and park and rec were fair game to be verbally assaulted with vulgarities, false accusations, and mockery when they did not align with this group's vision of Two Rivers. When defending myself against these false allegations, I was told that those in leadership need to have a thick skin because vile comments and accusations are the norm. My most recent attack occurred when I questioned the Route 1 bus coming past our home. When we moved here in 2014, the bus was on its original Adams Street route with a 36-foot-wide street and no stop signs. That was established in 2000. In 2020, it mysteriously moved to a parallel street, a half a block onto a way, onto a 32-foot-wide street with four stop signs. As the saying goes, "If it isn't logical, it's political." We have a neighbor who is a candidate for a lung transplant due to having only 12% to 15% lung capacity. He lives by a stop sign where a large plume of black exhaust and squeaky brakes disrupts his breathing in the summer and his naps during the day due to difficulty sleeping at night. I explained this scenario several times when accused of wanting the bus to leave Two Rivers. In reality, I only requested that the bus be returned to its formal, original route. By the time Kyle and Kayla arrived, I had a pretty good handle on the tactics of the opposition. I observed the same incivility aimed at them that I had experienced, and for the same reason, they wanted someone else. As a result, they were labeled insufficient and could say or do nothing right from day one. Having been in their shoes, I did what I could to be a positive encouragement to them and everyone else serving in leadership, positions that are being unfairly targeted with harsh words of condemnation and criticism with very little to no words of validation, support, and gratitude for their many sacrificial efforts on behalf of Two Rivers citizens. Needless to say, this is neither balanced nor civil. If positive efforts and accomplishments are ignored and only negatives are perceived, asserted, and proclaimed, how can healthy civil communication and satisfying solutions become a reality? If citizens are not connecting with the harsh realities of the world at national levels, it would be easy to blame local government for what ails our community.
30 seconds left. Sorry.
That's okay. Here are a few facts that might help adjust faulty perspectives that taint our perceptions and the decisions we are facing. Number one, Bill Clinton sent 90,000 manufacturing business to other countries, as well as 5 million jobs. As a result, the United States went from a 76% industrial nation to a 76% service industry. It is hard to purchase services with low-paying jobs that do not provide adequate income. Two, Two Rivers is a 6.5 square mile with 92% of our land occupied. Not a lot of room to compete and accommodate manufacturing enterprises. Did you know that an AI data center electrical needs is equivalent to the needs of 100,000 homes? If you think your electricity bills are high now. Three, due to EPA regulations...
Can you finish it up, please? Sorry. Time's up. Can you just finish up quick?
Okay.
Three minutes is up.
Well, I was explaining why, and I will just end with this. We live in a harsh, chaotic world. Friends, grandparents, parents, and families are looking for an oasis of normalcy, nostalgia, and safety that satisfies a strong desire for what once was a kinder, more civil society. If we choose to work together and support healthy communication that leads to good ideas that supports healthy business model, I'm confident we can be successful. Let me close with this. I am not suggesting squelching differing opinions that are a healthy form of checks and balances and that help avoid costly mistakes. I'm suggesting, however, that we create a safe environment where creative ideas can be shared. One sure way to achieve this is to treat one another as we would want to be treated. Why? Because Jesus promised a house divided against itself will not stand. Jesus always keeps his promises. So if we want to succeed, we would be wise to heed his teaching and the attached painful consequence of failure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Susan Robitaille. I reside at 2213 Jefferson Street. I just underwent spinal fusion surgery two weeks ago, and it's my only son's 18th birthday. So really, I should not be here right now. But it was that important to me to address some of these issues. So I hope that my words mean something to you tonight. I represent myself and hundreds of concerned, like-minded residents regarding tonight's agenda. We've been told by our own city manager that by 2027, our city is projected to face a budget shortfall exceeding $600,000, and that doesn't account for the rising operational costs. Despite this urgent fiscal reality, tonight's agenda includes two major items, both which bypass public discussion and were sprung on the community without adequate transparency. Item one, the $520,000 concession stand remodel. First, the concession stand. We are being asked to approve a major $520,000 expenditure on a facility that operates only three months a year and nets under $10,000 annually. The current proposal involves borrowing $256,000 based on uncertain tourism projections and asks residents to carry a $130,000 burden. This is all happening despite the council voting on October 6 to wait until spring to allow more research and community conversation. This process shows a clear disregard for that previous vote. I wrote a petition yesterday. I wrote it in the afternoon. It's been online for 24 hours, and I only put it on Facebook. The residents have responded, and I stand here tonight to formally present my petition. It demands a binding referendum on this concession stand project. In just the 24 hours that I have had it online, it's garnered over 165 signatures. I was hoping for at least 100, but that shows that there's a lot of people who are not ready to say okay to this. They want more information. They want a clearer plan. They want a solid dollar amount, and they want to have a say in the matter, and they want to vote on it. This is a powerful, clear demonstration of public support for a vote. And the numbers will only grow if you proceed without resident input. We can force this to referendum by going around and knocking doors and getting signatures. I'm not sure the total amount. It's a little over 1,000 or so, but we have people that will do it. So I'm hoping it doesn't have to come to that. But if this is a popular thing and you are convinced that everyone's on board with it, then what's the harm in putting it to a vote for the public this spring on the spring election ballot? Those ballots haven't been printed yet, so they can easily add that to it. Item two, the perpetual care flowers. Families paid into this program with the promise of support forever. At your recent work session, the discussion was about fully funding this commitment for 2026. There was no public conversation about cutting this funding or shifting the responsibility onto residents through crowdfunding. To see this cut now appear on the agenda is a clear failure to honor a commitment made to our families. This is not how a responsible, honest government works. So I demand, what we demand... It's kind of strong words. We ask two immediate actions tonight. One, fully fund the perpetual flowers for 2026. Honor the commitments made to our families. And two, table the $520,000 concession stand remodel until there is a referendum vote to determine whether all the residents are all in favor of this or not. We are not against safety. So we will drop our petition and our demand for a referendum if you agree to only proceed with the $53,000 plan to complete the basic health code compliance updates already identified. Otherwise, we ask that you authorize a binding referendum question for the concession stand expenditure to be added to the spring 2026 election ballot. And I'm being redundant, but the ballots have not yet been printed, and this can easily be added. Be aware, we will continue to collect the required signatures to legally force this referendum if you choose to ignore our clear request. to legally force this referendum if you choose to ignore our clear request tonight. Residents deserve honesty, transparency, and thoughtful stewardship of our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Lanth. I reside at thirty-one thirty-one Adam Street. I have emailed the council on a couple of things before this. Perpetual care is very important. It's coming from a German heritage. Cemeteries have a great deal of commitment in this town in history, and sometimes we forget that that history is about those people that are buried there, and those people spent a lot of money for it. The second piece is the concession stand. I do think that there should be some improvements. I don't think it should be five-hundred-and-fifty, what, twenty-five now? It was agreed that it was always supposed to be looked at to four-hundred-and-fifty budget, and all of a sudden, it came back at five-twenty-five. I also don't agree that the city should be adopting the recommended action of including beer sales. If you notice, there was a recommended action that there was going to be beer attached to it. I'd like to know what the liability is for the city selling beer at that location, and also the commitment from the police force of who's going to monitor it.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Puls. I'm at twenty-four oh nine Washington Street. It's so great to see all of you here, and thank you to those of you who responded to my inquiry today. I really appreciate it. I didn't intend to speak, but after seeing all of my fellow residents express their thoughts, I was inspired. So thank you to all of you. Council, budgets are at their core about distinguishing between wants and needs. We all do this in our personal lives, and as a local government, it's your responsibility to do this for the city. While a new concession stand or major improvements to the concession stand may be a want, today, you've heard clearly from your citizens and constituents about their needs. As stewards of this city and of the city's funds, you carry the responsibility to honor those needs first. Your constituents have asked for more information, more clarity, and a clearer path forward.
Go ahead. I think someone went up the wrong door, so go ahead.
So as I was saying, your constituents have asked you this evening, and I'm sure over the course of the last couple of months, for more information, more clarity, and a clearer path forward. It's not your obligation or even your job to figure out how to move past their objections. It is your obligation to answer those questions, address their concerns, and earn their support before taking this path. That is the job entrusted to you. And in this case, that is the only job entrusted to you, and you must do it. From what we've heard tonight, it seems evident that more time is needed to gather this information to provide those answers and to ensure that your citizens and your taxpayers feel respected, informed, and confident in the decisions being made. I urge you to take that time. As the previous citizen stated, let's table this for a referendum vote. Let the citizens of this community speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Gomez, twenty-twenty-three Garfield, council manager. I moved to this town because it was small. I thought it would have traditions, but these traditions, little by little, are being whittled away. For me, it was the baseball diamond, gone. Tennis courts, gone. Now they're talking about the concession stand. Well, traditions matter. Little things matter. Once you whittle traditions away, you kind of lose your, your past. So little things matter. And with that being said, we should keep our traditions, keep them strong, because that's what makes Two Rivers. I moved here because it was small, and I joined American Legion to keep our Legion tradition, to honor our veterans. With that being said, let's keep our tradition here. If we degrade it, we lose Two Rivers. God bless Two Rivers.
Hello, my name is Michael Bergwijn. I reside at twenty-seven oh seven Forest Avenue. I am a new resident to the area here. Coming from a tourist area up in Door County, Sister Bay specifically, this town needs tourism to survive. It hands down absolutely needs it. You need to find the balance between the tourism, the industry, the commerce. You need it. Somebody had said that this town is returning into a retirement town. Retirement town is where people go to retire to enjoy themselves for the rest of their life. This town is just straight dying. There's, you look around, you walk the streets, every other house is, has structural issues. When I was looking at properties to buy, I look at dozens of homes, and every home was a POS. There was garbage. It was issues beyond issues. I moved here because it was cheap, honestly. I couldn't find a job here that fit my, my goals, so I got a job in Green Bay. But the reason why I moved here, it was cheap. I want to start my business back up here in this town. I was able to buy my house free and clear. It was great. It is great. It's a nice, small community. It's a beautiful place. You have so much potential with the rivers, the beach, the forest areas, the parks. It is absolutely gorgeous, but it's not being managed properly. You need to have a, I feel that, I feel that with any step towards, especially a tourism aspect of it, you need to have a insight committee insight laid out, all the analytics put out in front of people to say, like, if you do this, it'll draw in this percentage of tourism, which would potentially allow us to have eighty rooms filled in the hotels because of yada, yada, yada. But we need to keep them in town. That's the thing. People come from, because of the area here, it is in the triangle of like the Green Bay, Fox Valley area, Door County, Sheboygan. They're coming up, they're visiting, day trips, they're leaving. Got to keep them in town. There's, hands down, that's it. I don't know, I'm just rambling, so I'm going to sit back down.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Terry Wagner, thirty-six fifty-nine River View Drive, and I'm here to support the, our library, because I don't know about anybody else, but I see our country and, and our town turning ignorance into an art form. And I think the only way to keep our young people wanting to learn, desiring to know the truth, and being tough enough to fight for it, is to support our library, which is run by a magnificent group of people that work very hard above and beyond where they need to go. And they make their money go as far as it can go. They're seriously, well, they're kind of, they can, they can cheap it out sometimes by doing things themselves. And we have staff at this library that has been acknowledged nationally. Let's not let go of that. It's one thing that Two Rivers is doing really well. Let's keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm from, on Twenty-Fifth Street. So again, thank you for all your service here as well. And I've been listening to my community. I'm from Antua County originally. I went to college in Milwaukee, lived there with my husband thirty-six years. My husband died. I wanted to come back home because I love the history here. My family is buried in the cemeteries here. I love the outdoors. It's what brought us back. My husband and I were camping at Point Beach. We just loved it. It was like the best kept secret. And, but I also watched my father lose his business in Manchuk and saw that break his heart. And, you know, it's not so bad having people retire here. I kind of saw my retire from being a therapist to running a bed and breakfast now, but I also live here, and I shop here, and I support this area. The short-term rentals, however, they're here for the summer, and they're gone. They don't necessarily care as much about our city as we do, and because they're not invested here. Tourism's fine, but I get a lot of people coming to my bed and breakfast wanting to move here from Texas, from California, from different places. Maybe we need to help them find a way to live here, because you know what? I'm taking my resources, and I'm investing in this house that's a hundred-and-twenty-four years old. And let me tell you, it takes a lot of resources to invest in that house. And then I see my eight percent room tax go toward a concession stand that is going to benefit three months. I mean, this town dies in the winter. I mean, how do the restaurants stay open? I don't know, because all those people that are coming here for three months are gone. My business dries up in those months. I mean, I don't care because I need a break, okay? But what about those other places? They need to keep their doors open. I just wanted you to know that there are plenty of people looking to move here that have income, have money to spend on fixing up these houses. I know there's a house diagonal from mine, that white house with the porch that was falling apart, the raccoons were in the rafters. I mean, I had someone interested. They have family that, from Green Bay, they wanted to do that. And it's like, how do I get them to the right people? That house was on the market for how long? And I'm asking questions, and I can't find answers. So you guys help feed me. I mean, I get people looking for places here. So I don't know if that helps with anything, but I'm invested in this community. I'm from here. And I know too, it's like, even just when I talked about the bike trail, we can't, we have a lot of winter sport potential here for tourists. Is anybody looking into that? And we talked about the storage units that they wanted to build on the river. That didn't happen, but nothing else is being developed there either. I tried to talk with the people that have the rental things, the kayaks and stuff. It's like, they're never open when I can go talk to them. I liked, I think you said, getting a committee to look at tourism, I think, is a good idea, because I like a lot of good ideas, and I'd like to encourage people to come to Two Rivers. I mean, I tell them all the things to come and see between Manchuk and Two Rivers. There's a lot of potential, even with the paddlers and the kayakers and stuff. They don't stay by me. It's like, how are they finding in the area, and they don't find me? Do they just want a cheaper hotel? I don't know. But those are questions to try and develop the tourism, but it needs to continue through the whole year, not just the three months. And concession stand isn't the best use of my eight percent taxes, room tax. I think ways to help tourism to be throughout the whole year so that the restaurants can stay open, that bookstores can stay open, the library can, you know, offer things for people that want, that's another thing. We had an artist who did one of the three official portraits of Eisenhower. Why isn't it then displayed in the library? Where is it? I tell people about it, they go to look, and it's not there anymore. I don't know where it is. Where'd it go? Things like that. So if there's someone who's interested in developing a community for tourism and stuff, and meet a realtor to say, okay, when people tell me they want to move here, how do I get them to the right people? I want to see the city thrive as well. Again, I don't want to live what my father lived. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Russell Gedgeon, thirty-one oh five Adam Street. I had the privilege of being born in Two Rivers. I've actually lived here a total of five years. I own property here. I am not a resident. I bring my grandchildren here. Very privileged kids. They live in Panama. They come to Two Rivers, and they call it Never Never Land because it's safe. It's a good place to live. They live in a first-world, third-world country. This is the first world. It's the first world, and it's part of the best part of the first world. A lot of acrimony here tonight about things that are important, but they're not really the core of what you're talking about. Things are changing. Two Rivers is no longer an industrial town. It isn't. Hasn't been for a long time. That disappeared before I left here, after high school. It had already gone. Is it a retirement community? Yeah. I'm eighty-two. I'll be here another ten years. That's a long time, or maybe longer. You have to, we have to figure out how to assess your current situation, deal with the realities you're living with. Tourism is great. It's also a very tough business. There's not a lot of big, high-paying jobs in tourism. It requires a lot of work, and it requires a community that's behind that concept. So take care of your retired folks. I like being taken care of. So will you when you get to be my age. And the older you get, the more you like it. Take care of your tourists. But I'm a tourist. I'm fundamentally, I own property here, but I'm still a tourist. That's my, my business that I still run in Panama is a tourism business. We take care of the people that come in, figure out what they want, and then provide it. I don't get to decide what they want. I get to listen to what they ask for and make it happen. So listen, I don't, I don't have a source for you. I don't live here enough to tell you what people want. But if you aren't listening to what the people coming in the door want, and then figuring out how to give it to them, tourism isn't going to work. Thanks. Appreciate it. I didn't plan to talk tonight, but after hearing a lot of people arguing about, I don't want to say inconsequential things, I think things that should have been resolved without a great deal of thought. I mean, should you honor our contract? Yes, you should honor our contract. It's, it's an open and shut question. Do you need a concession stand? You probably need a lot of things. Is the concession stand a great investment for any kind of tourism business? Probably not. But I don't know that, and you don't know that either. So valid questions. Hey, guys, keep it up. I really enjoy living in Two Rivers when I'm here. It's a wonderful place. Don't sell it short, but take the time to figure out where you're going. Thanks.
Thank you.
Stanley Palmer again. I began all this, didn't I? Okay. My wife and I moved here from Texas. I'm a retiree. We bought a very nice house in the year two thousand and eight, and then I continued teaching down in Texas. But when I retired in, I'm eighty-one now, when I retired in twenty fourteen, we moved into the house fully. Before that, we came up here at the holiday time and during, during the summer. But I had to go back to Texas to make some money by teaching summer classes, too. But I don't have an Airbnb. We don't go to Florida or other southern place during this winter. We stay here twelve months in the year. We love it here. We spent a couple of years trying to figure out where to go because we knew we wanted to get out of the South. And so we started driving north from Chicago, just up on the east side of Wisconsin, and we-- on the east side of Wisconsin. And we came upon this, oh my God, what, what is this? Two Rivers? Look at that lake out there. Holy crap. What the hell? What the hell is that? It's like the Mediterranean. It's just gorgeous. And yeah, I don't want to get talking about the bad stuff like, you know, all the factories left in the year 2000. But, but they did. And it's not just in this city. It's around the country. You all know that. So that's, that's a big thing to take care of. How are you going to fix that, right? I mean, maybe it's too late to fix that. I don't know. But I just want to end by saying that my wife and I are extremely happy here. And we stay here. We love the Four Seasons. We like the people here that we've met. And so I think that's just one of the little factors, one of the little factors to, to sustain and keep talking about. Thank you. Okay, I'll sit down now.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll be 2001 Emmett Street. I grew up here, moved away for over 50 years, came back, found a major fixer-upper over on the east side, and turned that around. What I learned is, I lived north, south, east, west in this country. I've been all over the country. And this is a phenomenal resource. And we do need to focus on what is working and what can help us continue to grow. And I came in late. I'm sorry, I was at another meeting. But that library is a gem. And I volunteer at some places. And I've had tourists come to me and say, that is a phenomenal resource. So it even affects our tourists. It affects our youth. We do have many disadvantaged children, and that's a great resource for them. Programs for seniors are wonderful. The educational programs in the evening. I've found out so much information. Definitely, I think, if you're looking at our community and our future, the library is an excellent investment for our city because it benefits everybody in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
David Drews, 919 20th Street. For the last several months, I've been here watching the city council meetings. And in that time, you've elected to postpone any action on the concession stand until you had a tour. You did the tour. I was here when you tabled anything until next year. Only to find out now that you want to add over $500,000 to the budget, and then say in 2027, we're $600,000 short? When this council, a month ago, voted down the proposal to tie tax revenue to property values, and to keep it at cap at $2 million? And so now it's like a big flip. So is this smoke and mirrors? Are you going to do what you said you were going to do? Or are you just going to railroad this stuff through? It doesn't make any sense. We're watching you, all of you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you all for your input tonight. Greatly appreciate it. On to number eight. Council Communications, letters and other communications from residents. Yes, Adam?
I got a couple. I'll make them short and sweet. I did get contacted on the bike trail and why we do not plow that. It is a budget restraint. We did try that a couple of years ago. We went through the numbers to try to get that done. I did ask Public Works, I think it was two years ago on that. And it just didn't fit. It does cost more than probably people expect, but I think it'd be something that should be taken care of. But again, with the budget that we have currently, it's not there. We do Plough Raider Trail, which goes out to the high school, which is a fairly nice trail as well. It's not obviously the, the one that goes on the lake. Also concerns about the budget and the increase to the budget. Also a lot on the concession stand. And also a lot in favor of the library.
Thank you, Adam. Anyone else? Yes, Shannon?
We did the Two Rivers Community Meal on Thanksgiving, and we served over 100 people at the senior center. So that was really great and a great opportunity to meet and hear from people. And they, like a lot of the people that emailed us are in support of the library and have a lot more questions about the concession stand and flower situation. So.
Yep. Yeah, I think we got a lot of those emails today.
Yeah. Yeah, we all got a lot of letters on the, the flower situation. I got a unique one from a lady who was able to be one of the last ones to purchase this program for her mother. So she's vested in the program. Her concern is that over the years, tending to her mother's grave and such, there's many of the flowers that get planted that don't get tended to and die and shrivel. And she's very concerned that that was a waste. And that's not really a good way to honor the people that passed with that flower. So maybe we can try to weed out who's not interested in receiving them anymore in some way.
Anyone else? On to number nine, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Mark, go ahead.
This morning, we had a senior citizens meeting at the senior center. And there's some really good news from our school board, our school representative, Kyle, he talked about recently, the district report was published, and that grades our school system. And last year, our grade was 56.9. This year, our school system jumped, and 56.9 was a two star grade. This year, our school system jumped up to 65. And we now are a three star community in the state of Wisconsin. So that's good news and congratulations to the school. And I believe we should have our superintendent come and give a full extensive report on that.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Okay. See nothing else, then we'll go to number 10, Consent Agenda. Under A, we have presentation in minutes. We have the city council regular meeting from November 17, 2025, and the city council work session from November 24, 2025. The recommended action is motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, we have minutes of meetings. We have Committee on Aging, November 3, 2025, Police and Fire Commission, November 25, 2025, and Business and Industrial Development Committee and Community Development Authority from November 25, 2025. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. The recommended action for the consent agenda will be a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. So looking for that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended.
Thank you, Adam. Seconded by Shannon. Any council discussion? See none, we'll do a voice vote. On favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. On to 11, City Council formal items. The first one is a resolution to hold a primary election on February 17, 2026, if needed, for city office candidates at the April 7, 2026 spring election. This resolution authorizes the city to hold a primary election on February 17, if seven or more candidates filed nomination papers for any city office. Anything else to add?
No, nothing, nothing from the staff to add. It's pretty straightforward, and we'll entertain any questions.
Any counts, or any questions? Yes, Bonnie?
What is bringing this about? And is this, I'm hesitant to vote on this because I didn't think you could do this. I thought there was only so many candidates you could have on a ballot. For example, if there's one position open, then two people are, can run. And here, there's always three open. So I would, I'm just wondering about seven people running.
Because we have three open seats, and there can be two people running for each seat, which is a total of six that can go to the spring election. So if we'd have seven that file papers, or more, we would need them to go to the primary. That is what this is covering.
Let's see. No, we're, I thought it said that you are wanting to eliminate that. In other words, that you want it to be resolution, if needed for city office candidates. So you're just voting on this? We never voted on this before.
It is needed by state statutes to set a primary if needed, unless you pass a charter ordinance. And we have not passed a charter ordinance in the city, just mandating a primary if needed. So that's why every year we have to.
And this is just a formality?
Correct.
And if seven people are running, you will have a primary?
Correct.
Okay, that's, all right, got it.
I believe, I believe we've done this historically every year, haven't we? If there's seven or more, we have a primary. So this is standard.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion then. Go ahead, Doug.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance or the resolution.
Thank you, Bill. Any council discussion? See none, we'll do a roll call vote. Amanda?
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Stuckmuster?
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner? Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand? Motion carries.
Okay, on to B, application of a new Class B intoxicating liquor and fermented malt beverage license for the Violet Inn LLC, DBA Violet Inn Lounge and Spa at 1415 16th Street. This item just considers approval on alcoholic beverage license applicant, application for Violet Inn LLC, which is a lounge, spa, and small inn located at 1415 16th Street. And includes appointment of Melissa Nissen as a licensed agent, with the license period running through June 30, 2026. Anything else to add? Pretty straightforward.
Pretty, pretty straightforward. We're very excited to welcome the Violet into downtown Two Rivers and share in the bright future we know is coming.
We're just looking for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application issued the license as presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Any council discussion?
It was second.
Yeah, secondary. Yep. Seeing nothing else, we'll do a roll call vote. Amanda?
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Stuckmuster?
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner? Shannon Derby? Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Motion carries.
On to C, ordinance to amend municipal code section 2-1-2, division of city into wards to establish a new polling place for the sixth, seventh, and eighth wards of the city of Two Rivers. This ordinance amends municipal code section 2-1-2 to update the legal descriptions of the sixth, seventh, and eighth wards and to change their combined polling place from Abundant Life Church at 1969 Roosevelt Avenue to the Hamilton Wood Type and Printing Museum at 1816 10th Street. Any questions for Amanda?
Why are we moving?
We have been looking for a spot that is a larger area. Abundant Life is a small area that in busy elections can get very crammed. When we were looking for something, and that's part of the city, we checked out the Hamilton Wood Type Museum. They have a very nice gallery area that has a separate entrance that would work very well for our election day and give us a lot of space.
Any other questions? Otherwise, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. Doug, any council discussion?
I just want to make sure that we get the word out, then that that is a one way, too. Not that people keep circling back, because that's a funny one that most people don't travel. Just because we'll have a lot of action there on that day with people coming and going, not that they come out the wrong way.
We will have signage, and we are also sending mailings to everybody that lives in that district of the change.
And that'll be part of that, to remind them that it's a one way to get back out?
Yep.
Maybe Public Works could put up some extra one way signs or something, just to help. I see Matt shaking his head up and down. Yes. Thanks, Matt.
Council discussion?
Yes, thank you. Anything else?
Are costs associated with that move? They possibly. So we pay our polling places $100 for each election. So I know their board is very excited to get more of the public in there.
Awesome. Anything else? See nothing else, we'll do a roll call vote. Amanda?
Scott Stuckmuster?
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Tim Petrie? Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you all for that. On to D, resolution approving business improvement district levy and assessment rate for 2026. The bid board held its annual meeting on Thursday, November 20, 2025, to review the 2026 bid operating plan, confirm funding commitments to the Two Rivers Main Street, and reaffirm the assessment rate at $1.77 per $1,000 of assessed value. The board also scheduled a second meeting for May 2026 to consider an update to the bid boundary map, its first potential change since the district was established in 1996. This review will evaluate whether the current boundaries align with today's business activity and downtown reinvestment goals. Further updates will be provided as this work progresses. First off, any questions about this? Something we typically just have to approve every year. See nothing, then we're just looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution as recommended by the Business Improvement District Board.
Thank you. Seconded by Shannon. Any council discussion?
Who's this raised from?
They're keeping it at the same level it was last year. Yeah. At least, at least until they have that chance to reconvene in May for the first time in three decades to study the boundary changes. Maybe then for the following year, the rate could change.
Any other discussion? See none, we'll, excuse me, see none, we'll do a roll call vote. Amanda?
Adam Wuhusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc? Mark Bitner? Shannon Derby? Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Tim Petrie? Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Stuckmuster?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to E, cemetery perpetual care flowers. As part of the 2026 budget, the city has included $2,700 in the property tax funding to help support the cemetery flower program for one final year. To fully cover the 2026 planting costs, an additional $3,300 will be raised through a community crowdfunding campaign, which the city can launch in December 2025. Property tax support for 2026 is intended as a transition year with the expectation that interested residents will organize a citizen-led group to assume long-term responsibility for the perpetual care flower program beginning in 2027. This group would oversee future fundraising and establish a sustainable flower fund, so the program can continue without ongoing city funding. If this is accomplished, the city will commit to planting the flowers each spring perpetually, assuming the flowers will not be purchased with general fund property taxes. Staff will assist with the transition planning and initial outreach, but will not provide funding beyond 2026. So the recommended action is a motion to include the $2,700 in general fund property taxes for one final year of support for cemetery perpetual care flowers. Before the council can discuss it, we do need a motion in a second. I know there'll be lots of discussion about this, but.
I will make a motion to fully approve the perpetual care flowers in the amount of 60, or just over $6,000, as stated. I think it's 63, I believe, is the, the full amount. I will make a motion to, to approve that.
Okay. Thank you both. Mike, was that the correct amount, 6,300? Do you know?
Isn't even 6,000? Even 6,000. I was right on my first one.
There we go.
Second guessed myself.
I just want to say one thing, because this would be nice to transition over to more power to the individuals who live in our city who are passionate about this. Just wanted to let you know that right now, it would be 2,700 bucks from the general fund, this is for 2026, with 3,300 from donations. We already have pledges in the amount of 1,400 bucks. So there is interest from citizens. And we have 1,900 bucks to go. And I think that that can easily be raised, once we have, once we put out there that this is what we're doing. You guys are hearing it first. So I just wanted to say. So I just wanted to say that that there is interest in helping continue on with this flower fund.
Aside of.
Um, yeah, I think there are people that want to donate to it. However, I think that that money should go to start a fund for years to come because this is going to be an ongoing cost for that group. They're going to have to do that six thousand dollars every year to to get these flowers bought. And I think they should start with that donation to go towards years to come, and hopefully they can raise more. And they can start of financing that money or putting it in the market somewhere to help that that grow and really get established. I think it is our job and our duty to fully provide the perpetual care flowers this year out of our budget. I don't think it's fair to do that to them at budget time with just a couple of weeks to go to say, hey, how are you going to figure this out?
Yes, I agree.
And I think there are ways in the budget we can do that. So I mean, if it's if it's cutting out of cretin, if it's cutting raises, even if it's a city manager raise and we backdate that that raise, if room tax comes through, we can backdate that raise. Usually Greg didn't get his raise actually until Personnel and Finance did a overlook on on the performance. So I mean, by that time, quarter one will be done and we can take a look and see what room tax has, and we might be able to fill the void that way as well. But this has to come out of the general fund, in my opinion.
It would be helpful if the council could. It's very easy to find things that we want to fund and that we want to put money towards. And I agree, this is important. It would be helpful if the council could get to a decision on what, how you would like to fund that and what you would like to be cut instead of this. You're not going to have a recommendation from the city manager to cut employee raises under than three percent. If that is something the council would like to do, um, make a motion on that and and we shall go that way. But the question, the most valuable question is how would you like to pay for that?
I presented two ideas right there that I would be okay with.
So you don't want to have donations?
Not not for this year. I I think that should go because they're going to have to fundraise for six thousand dollars every year. And they're not going. It's not going to be easy to come up with that. They're going to have to start some kind of a fund that they're going to have to put into some kind of a market to continue to build that to hopefully beat that off the interest and hopefully that at one time they'll get six thousand dollars in interest once they get that fund fully beefed up. And I think to take that out of there right now at a last minute budget meeting, I don't think is fair to them. It was when they bought these things, it was perpetual, in perpetuity forever. And I don't think it's right for us to take it away ever. I'm I'm happy that they're willing to even fund this in the future because technically I think it should be our job to do that in perpetuity. I really do.
All I'm saying is that there's interest to be engaged in this. And that would be for twenty twenty six. That would give everybody time to come up with a plan for twenty twenty seven. And I think that's where we could help folks who are interested in maybe spearheading something like this that they could get all their ducks in a row. We've got interest to get this through for twenty twenty six and, you know, I mean, yeah, twenty seven hundred bucks from general fund. And then people who really care about this are donating already, and they are donating to get us through twenty twenty six.
I think they should get us through the future, and also these flowers got to be ordered like now because Green Acres said they should have been ordered two weeks ago. You order them. So either which way, whether or not we do this, we're going to have to pay for it.
Anyone else?
Maybe revise your motion to give us direction on how you would like to pay for it.
I I can do that. Once I I'll listen to everybody else on council and see what they they want to do before I revise. I'm not going to revise and then someone say, hey, I don't agree with that. So if anyone else disagrees with my ways to pay for it, go ahead.
Mark had something first, Bonnie.
I I'd like to state right now, um, we've had one individual, Stalky, had suggested she would lead the group to raise the money. Finance. Not this year, the thousand dollars you were going to. Sure, if you want, because in the personnel and staff meeting, I heard a thousand dollars she'd lead the crusade going forward, or is that not for this year? I thought, yes, come up and speak.
No, actually, she can't. We're not supposed to interact with the public. It's not part of the agenda. So go ahead with your comments, Mark.
So the.
Sorry, Kathy.
The shortfall, the thousand dollars, and I think there's people donated another uh seven hundred dollars. So that'd be a thousand dollars. Seventeen hundred in donations that we had received. Now, whether or not the question is whether or not going forward, the following year, or if it's this year, in fact, any any regardless, we still have a shortfall of thirty three hundred. So if Adam's motion wants to move forward, we should determine where the thirty three hundred comes from in the shortfall for this year in order to meet the perpetual follow flower obligation. And I would like to see us do that, too. I agree with Adam, but again, this uh decision was made in, I believe, in ninety six, and they've had almost thirty years of additional general fund subsidy to move through this period of time. So I don't think it's unreasonable that we transfer that and maybe not this year, but next year, transfer and use the seventeen hundred that's already been donated to start the fund. But I think we have to make the decision with the motion where the thirty three hundred comes from.
Yep. The reason I didn't do that is I want to get everyone else's opinion as to where they want that thirty three hundred to come from. I don't want to sit here and mandate it and then switch a bunch of times if everyone else isn't going to agree with it.
You know, the other thing that came out of Personal and Finance Committee two or three weeks ago when that was discussed was if we can't get to a hundred percent, you know, if we only fund seventy or eighty percent of it, then we just dial back on the flowers a little bit. Instead of that person getting five, maybe they get three. Instead of that person getting twenty, maybe they get fifteen. That idea came out of the committee as well, and it seemed like residents in attendance at the time were fine with that idea.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Yes, Bonnie.
I would actually like to go back and see the history of this. I tried to find it before the meeting, but it's sometimes it's kind of hard to look for it. I think there was a vote to not continue the program, but that doesn't mean we weren't going to keep the first people in. Does that make sense to everybody? In other words, there was a cutoff that said no new people could join anymore. But I still would like to see the history of this, and I I don't exactly know how to go about it. It's there's like ten pages that came up when I Googled in cemetery flower. So um, and I want to make this clear. You made the motion to pay for it for twenty six, correct?
Correct.
Because I do agree with that, so. I was just going to say that I agree with Bonnie. I mean, keep hearing about contracts and, you know, things like that, and I've never seen them. I'd like to know how many people were paid into this program. I have no clue. So how many people is that going to cover?
We we have numbers on that, and we there's no contract. At least I've never seen a contract. I've seen thirty year old receipts and the nature. But but no contract.
I actually don't have any receipts from the perpetual care flowers. I have I have um I have uh the conveyances for perpetual care. That is on the conveyances. But we don't. We actually have no records of how the flowers were purchased. We have a list of everybody. I can give you the list. I've got an exact list of how many flowers we plant every single uh on each grave and whose grave it belongs to. So you can actually figure out how much they paid in based on the number of flowers that they're getting. But I actually have no records of when they paid into the perpetual care.
We did. We did receive a receipt from the Hervalas when we did discuss this at Personnel and Finance. I also did receive just, I think, yesterday, a con what looked like a contract of sorts for this.
They're definitely.
There's paperwork that's definitely out there.
Individuals definitely could have them in their possession if their family members kept them. We do not have a a documentation of those perpetual care flower purchases from when they happened.
Yeah, because there there's a receipt from the Hervalas that that was presented.
Yeah, I I believe them. They've got a receipt. I I mean, I just don't have any receipts at the office.
Okay, at the office. But did you see the one that they presented or not?
Uh, I I have, and I have a list, and so I know which graves uh which graves the flowers go on. So.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
I I've I've seen receipts. I've never. There's no contract. I'm just making a distinction between receipts and and illegal contracts.
I I'm and I'm not saying the individuals may have receipts that their family had in possession. I'm just saying the city has no documentation of those receipts. They very well could hand over a receipt to us, and it could be legit. So.
I had I had this conversation over the weekend with Kyle, right? I had said the same thing Tim says. A receipt is a contract. I mean, when you come in and you purchase something, you get a receipt that that says that you have purchased that, that 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 is a contract saying you gave them money, you received the product. If that product is no longer valid, you can return it with a receipt. It's a contract that you bought it from X store. When you pay your utilities, you get a receipt that says you are current. They can't shut your utilities off. It it's saying that you have paid for this. And I I view the receipt as the same thing. I've seen the receipt. I've seen the documentation. And I believe it's our responsibility to do this. It's been shown through, um, I think it was back in nineteen ninety five when they took the perpetual care money. And it sounds like some of it was spent on a roof and some was spent elsewhere when that documentation was presented to us. That goes to show that that fund did happen, and that's what it was for, and we need, we do need to fund this this year.
I I would just reiterate, if you guys want us to honor those receipts as a contract, that's within your discretion. I'm just saying is not every family, not everybody on that list that we have is going to have a receipt. They're just they would have to be pulling them out of a closet somewhere, right? So my my documentation, other than people bringing in receipts, is the list that I have of everybody that gets the flowers and the number of flowers. So you guys can have us, you know, execute and follow up on that, but just I may not have documentation.
And I'm not. I'm not here to argue with you, but I'm going to say if they're on the list, they probably should get done. Not everyone's going to keep a receipt from nineteen ninety five or earlier. I know I don't. I I don't keep receipts quite that long, and some members have passed away. Some members have moved away and don't even know we're talking about this right now. So I I would say that if they're on the list, that they are receiving perpetual care flowers because they had a receipt at one time and had signed up for the program, and that that's that's how they had to get on the list. Again, I'm not being argumentative. I I agree. I mean, receipts are important, but I mean, you're going back a a long time.
Mike, how many of these flowers do you think are dead by halfway through summer?
There are. There is. There is a decent amount. Cemetery Crew says that many of them are are maintained. I don't have an exact number off my head. If I had to guess, it'd be between forty and fifty percent.
So anything else, counsel?
Does you want to ask if anyone else has an idea on how to fund it?
Darla had something yet.
I just have a question for Mike. How long do you think that um list is? Like, how many gravesites do you think get involved?
I I should have brought it with me. I apologize. It's a hundred fifty. Four hundred?
Four hundred.
Four hundred. Mine is.
Oh, four. She's seen the list. Yeah.
Mark.
You know, um, there's the it for sol, we're all at a disadvantage because we don't have all the details of when that decision was made in nineteen ninety six. So right now we have an immediate problem. We have a shortfall of thirty three hundred dollars. And maybe we can accomplish that by uh trying to identify. I heard some graves are getting up to two hundred flowers. Is that? Yeah. And so maybe we can work through this by trying to reasonably reduce the number of flowers that are put in this perpetual activity and um and then try to whittle the budget down to cover whatever we can't reduce. But I agree philosophically, uh, we can't. It's kind of late in the year to try to force this group to fund the entire amount. So let's figure out a way to either cut back the number of flowers to see if we can reduce the thirty three hundred shortfall uh and see how we can get that done. And then if we have that, we have to have ideas on where to cut within the budget, the thirty three hundred or whatever reduced flowers the actual cost is. But the good news is we've ordered the flowers for this upcoming season, so we're moving forward there. I think it's unrealistic to consider the city and never part of the original plan to water and maintain the flowers once they are planted. But let's just get through this year and, you know, the concept of using the donations, which I have up to seventeen hundred dollars right now as a starter pot for that fund, I agree. And I personally donated to this agreement. And I encourage everyone else who's really passionate about it. Maybe they can throw in some money too to donate. Uh, but let's try to get through this year by reducing.
Hey, excuse me, sir words.
Well, at the time, that
Mark.
The the funding used for the roof, it saved the taxpayers dollars to do.
Okay, so um the so Adam has a motion. Any other council discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you run by the run me run down the um payment options again?
Uh, so I I said we could either take it from further reduce the cretin funding that that they take care of the waysides and the medians and some of our signs, or we can take it from the city manager's raise. And if room tax comes through, we can prorate that. Usually we give the city managers raise in the first quarter after Personnel and Finance goes through the goals of the year. So that would be a good time. If room tax comes through with that in quarter one, like they said, they're going to at least talk about. That would be perfect timing if we approved the raise that we can backdate that like we always did with our former city manager. Or we can just flat out say, hey, we're going to reduce the cost of living that we're giving everyone. Maybe that's two point nine nine percent. Maybe it ends up being two point nine eight percent. I I don't know what that number is. Uh, Cassie would have a better idea of that, and I'm sure she's not really plugging away at it, but she might try to later. Also, do we have, are we looking at a budget shortfall for year end, Cassie? Do you know? Or are we going to have a surplus? Okay.
Um, there's a couple revenue items that a little over budget in a couple departments, but that's on some pretty quick projections, so.
Okay, so there's a possibility that there may be some money on a surplus at year end as well.
No.
No deficit.
Deficit, so you are. Okay.
And for the three options, you talked about cretin. We've already cut cretin landscaping thirty.
If I could, Kyle, I I'll give you guys an easy out. It's it's thirty three hundred dollars. And if we give some donations, we can delay our part-time employee raises that we were going to give. We could delay those by a few months. We can shave off like a hundred dollars here or fifty dollars here on certain line items. I'll find thirty three hundred dollars out of the Parks and Rec budget and we'll make it happen. And I'm sure somebody will give us some donations to to soften the blow on that.
The donations are to fund the future funding of the activity, right? Is that the?
And hopefully somebody, they could designate either way. They could tell us, you want to put it towards it right now, or you could, we could put it towards the the future, whatever they want to do. But we'll figure it out. I'm I'm confident we can. I the easiest way would be to delay my my part-time employee raises, and I would have salary savings.
I would like to add too, Adam, I don't think it's realistic to consider the room tax because I don't think the state would allow a room tax fund to be used for a cemetery.
It wouldn't be good used for the cemetery. It'd use to help them complete what they used to give for the wayside. So that would take out of the general fund that is now going to fund the wayside.
Already step forward in the wayside.
They also said in quarter one, they would retake a look at it to see where room tax projections are.
That that would occur in April of next year. After we have a full quarter, the Room Tax Commission could look at sending more money towards the general fund, depending on how quarter one is going. I wouldn't want to cut cretin landscaping anymore. We've already cut that a lot. And 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 staff's recommendation is not to cut employee wages for for seasonal or or full-time employees, but if that's the council's direction, if you could please make that part of your motion, that would be helpful.
Well, I think Mike has made a clerk. He'll be able to find it.
I can I can shave a few things off, especially on the part-time labor. If we took a thousand dollar hit on that and started people a week later or a few people, we'll we'll figure it out. So. There you go.
It doesn't have to be that much. I I got two hundred on it.
So.
So and and that's up to those people. If they want to donate for this year, they can they can designate it whatever the way they would like to. So I I confident. We're squabbling over thirty three hundred dollars on a massive budget. So um I think we can figure it out.
Okay, so not to cut everyone off, but I agree. I think we need to fund it for this year, no matter what, the six thousand dollars. And then, um, it's too short in the year to change anything. You just have to get it done.
Is, is council giving us direction for one final year of the property taxpayer being on the hook? Or is this not just for one final year?
I would say we should continue doing it. That's, that's just my opinion. That's something that the city agreed to years ago. Um, I don't know what the rest of the council feels like, but.
I, I think we should fund, that we should try to taper it off as they fundraise money. So next year, if they fundraise six thousand dollars or eight thousand dollars, we should fundraise a small portion of that so that we don't take the whole fund and they get a chance to grow it. So that in years to come, hopefully sooner than later, we can ultimately be out of the business. Maybe next year they have a great fundraising campaign and they're able to exceed expectations and we can be out of it. That, that'd be great, but I, I wouldn't set the bar and say that that is a for sure. I think we should start to make that trend down. So go from six to something lower than six and let them continue doing their fundraising as they have wanted to and agreed to do, which I think is outstanding of them because it's not something that they would have to do because it's technically importunity. So i- if they can't raise the money, I do think it is our responsibility as a council to continue on providing that.
Anything else? So just sort of the motion we have right now.
The motion is to approve the six thousand dollars.
Yep. And I guess if Mike's going to find a way to get that out of his budget, hats off to him. He does some remarkable things, um.
Okay. So anything else from the council? If not, let's do a roll call vote, Amanda.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Doug Brand. Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser. Adam Wawuski.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all for that. On to F, resolution adopting tax levy for the city of Two Rivers fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Uh, the proposed resolution adopts the tax levy for real and personal property including, included in the twenty twenty-five tax rolls for twenty twenty-six general city operations, debt service, Lester Public Library, Two Rivers Public Schools, Manitowoc Public Schools, Lakeshore Technical College, and Manitowoc County. The total tax levy adopted by the city is five million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand and seventy, and seventy-three dollars, which is an increase of four point zero five percent or two hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars from the previous year. So, um, before we can have council discussions, we will need a motion then. Okay, thank you. And we're seconded by Doug. Council discussion. Questions, concerns? Adam?
I, I do think we are still too high, uh, on our, on our levy. The four percent is a lot. And I know it equates to two percent over the last, over from last year and two percent this year. And I know it's not wasteful spending, but I also know there are some people out there that truly do struggle. And I've heard from them today, multiple of them today. A, a lot of them senior citizens that, that really struggle with, uh, all the bills that, that they pay. That, you know, not only is it coming from the city, but it's going to come from the school district. It's going to come from LTC in the county, which we have no control over. But, uh, I do think it is still a little too high, um. Too high for my liking.
Okay. Anyone else?
Of, of the total combined tax rate of roughly eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents per thousand dollars of assessed value, it's eighteen fifty-five per thousand, all right? Only about six and a half of that is the city's share. Six and a half out of eighteen fifty-five. That's for general obligation. That's for the general fund, debt financing, and the library. Another way of saying that the city's share is only thirty-five percent of what we're talking about.
Bonnie?
Yeah, I agree. This is too high. Just last year, people had reassessment of their homes. Their tax bill went up. Okay, so you can say the levy didn't go up, so what? They still paid more money. We are going to be pretty, I can't remember the date, but we're going to be pretty healthy with paying off certain debts. We took out a debt to pay off, um, um, I'm sorry, I can't remember. The, the money that you're supposed to give to the state to go toward pensions of your employees. And it had been delayed for a while. And that was a big debt. And, and whenever that's due, it'll be a relief for us. I, I guess I don't want to be in a hurry to make more debt.
Bonnie, anyone else?
Well, up to thirty-five percent the city is requesting, a lot of it is hit by the additional staff person that we had to add, not our choice, so it was mandated by the state. And also the insurance cost, uh, originally was twelve percent. And we worked back and got a new insurance company and it only went up eight percent. So I mean, some of the, and then the material costs for us to maintain our water systems and other things are escalating too. Inflationary costs across the board are going up. So this is not a budget that's thick and fat. It's a pretty realistic conservative budget alone. Last year, we had zero increase for the city.
Why did the, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, um, you know, it's, um, I think it's a realistic budget. And something in order for the continue, the city to continue be moving forward, I think we need to support it. And this also includes, again, the many comments that are received about the library. It supports the library. It's two percent increase.
Two percent for the library is in this.
The budget in front of you tonight includes the two percent for the library. Yep.
Gotcha.
Uh, if you want a little impact on a typical Two Rivers home, uh, this levy increase we're talking about, the four percent, which is for all the local governments, not just for the city of Two Rivers. If your home's valued at two hundred thousand dollars, this levy proposal equals about forty-eight dollars more per year or about four dollars more per month. Right. Just for the city's portion, which is thirty-five percent of what we're talking about tonight.
Any other council discussion?
I guess I would just add, this is just the, the, the final administrative step, uh, before tax bills can be finalized and mailed later in December.
I just want to clarify, this budget does include that two percent. All right, now what, this is a dumb question, but for the tax levy, if we do not adopt this and it just stays status quo, what else are we going to have to cut? You know, I mean, how is this going to affect us if we don't have the, the money for the budget? I mean.
It, yeah, it would be catastrophic. Um, we've had a couple difficult community conversations about what could we possibly cut? Or reduce or pull back on a little bit with MMT bus and flowers in the cemetery. Um, we can't cut those. Um, we can have, there will be more future difficult discussions about what the council wants to see cut, um, or reduced. I don't know what that is, but we are looking for direction.
Much has already been reduced. You know, I mean, where are we going to start cutting now? Infrastructure? There's nothing out there that, in this budget, that is frivolous. I mean, it all, take a look at it line by line. I mean, it's, and if you, if we could provide it, look at where we started and where we ended up. Um, I don't want to start digging into things that are really going to hurt us as a, as a city in the way we function and the, the quality of life. You know, I just, um, I just really have a hard time with it. I don't, I don't like the fact that it's going up either. And I just want people to remember that, you know, we're, we're not here as a city council to try and do backroom deals or, you know, we're in this, just like you guys are. We pay taxes. If we're trying to come up with, you know, something conniving so we could take advantage of the city, we're taking advantage of ourselves too. We're up here to serve you. We're not up here to hurt you. So. It's, sometimes this is a necessary evil. I think we all know that. Prices have gone up, yes. They've gone up for the city too. So if we do not adjust for that, what do we do? We don't have chemicals for the wastewater plant? I mean, there's got to be an end there. And honest to God, there is nothing in this budget that is wasteful. And it is centered on people who live here. We are here to work for you and we are doing our darndest. And I wish people would realize that we're not here to hurt you guys and/or to steal your money. There's a purpose. You pay taxes, you want them spent on the right things. That's what we're trying to do without having to sacrifice some things that are necessary or very, very important to save a couple bucks. All right, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Tim.
We can control what the school district puts for your port, portion of the tax bill or Manitowoc County or LTC. That's where everybody's dumped last year. And we're not, we're not in control of that.
I do think we need to listen to the citizens and support our library with the two percent. Um, they give the community more, much more than the two percent raise that they have requested every year without question. And I think we really need to consider what the library has to offer, what it does offer, and, um, the letters that we all received from those citizens that were passionate about our library.
Can I just say one last thing about the library? I didn't learn this until, um, last week, but, you know, with that two percent that the library would get, I think that translates out to thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-five. This I didn't know. They turn right around and they have to pay back to the general fund fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And that helps to pay for HR, IT, um, legal, all these things. They don't get it for free. They're getting this money to help them, yet they, they turn around and they have to pay us back. So just keep that in mind. It's a two percent. They're not going to keep all that money. They're going to pay for goods and services from the city, like in, I don't, I don't know, is it interdepartmental, um, charge? So keep that in mind because they're not getting that entire thing just to, you know, fund programs, which would be nice. They're not really getting that much.
Anyone else? Yes, Mark.
This also includes, and that's what we did, we knew how tight this was. It includes full funding of the transit bus too, which is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, which has jumped in the last three or four years forty-five percent. And it's going to continue, I think, to climb too. But yet we're covering that in this budget with this levy. We're going to look at that future cost to see what we can do to not hurt the bus, but maybe reduce the costs or at least keep it level for the next several years. But this covers the entire bus route, which was, there was a lot of feedback we got from the community. So we looked at every angle on this. It's an increase nobody likes, like Darla said, every reason, we don't like to do that, but it's a, I think it's necessary to keep our city prosperous and safe.
Regarding MMT Route One, we're, we're hopeful and we are in discussions with them about future changes that they can make to their operations, not our operations. What they can make to their operations to potentially reduce the cost that our property taxpayers send that way every year. Because it is going up at an amount that is unsustainable because we're not raising property taxes that high. Um, but if we, if we never pull back on anything, um, then I'm afraid the future is just more and more burden on property taxes.
Anyone else? I said.
Uh, how many pending retirements do we have this upcoming year?
Ending in the next year?
I know one for sure.
I want to say three, four.
Go ahead, Amanda.
Phone a friend.
I would say probably six or seven.
Six or seven pending out of the general fund or is that out of utilities as well?
I would have to look at my list.
Not out of just general.
It's not out of just general. There's a, it's, there's a variety.
Yeah. So I mean, there's an opportunity to hold some of those positions like we have done in the past, uh, temporarily as well, not fill them ASAP. Um, there's other ways to try to reduce that. And again, I, I think four percent, you can look at it and say forty-eight dollars isn't a lot, but to some people it's a lot. And again, that's just on our end of it. And you, Darla's right, it's not wasteful spending. We're not, we're not doing it to hurt anyone. We're not doing it to, to stick it to you. We pay the same taxes and we don't like it either. But unfortunately, we want the police on the, on the roads. We want the fire department to respond. We want DPW to plow our roads. We want Parks and Rec to be able to open up the restrooms and have play equipment for our children to go play at. And unfortunately, that all comes at a cost. And people are ninety percent of this fund. And we had health insurance go up just in the last two years, a combined eighteen percent. The same health insurance that you guys see increased at your own houses is increasing on, on our personnel. And what do we have? A hundred and ten, something like that, employees? Hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty-five employees throughout the whole city and, and that insurance went up for all of them. Plus we pay retiree insurance, which was a benefit that's no longer offered, but we still have to stand by it, much like we're doing with the perpetual care. Um, that also affects us. I think we got twenty-some retirees on our health insurance yet. Um, and their, their costs go up to just like the rest of our employees that are, that are here. A decision that wasn't made by this council, but we have to honor it.
Anyone else? Yes, Doug.
Um, yeah, we held the line at zero percent raise last year. Uh, but that did not stop inflation. Inflation was three percent last year. I believe it's projected to be three percent this year as well. Um, so a four percent is still less than inflation, so we're still at a net deficit. Um, so I think we need to hold that four percent to try to keep, otherwise we're just going to keep falling behind and behind and behind and.
Anyone else? Oh, okay. Then we'll do a roll call vote, Amanda.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
No.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wawuski.
No.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you all for that. On to G, uh, resolution authorizing the carry forward of allowable prior used, I'm sorry, resolution authorizing the carry forward of allowable prior year, unused levy capacity for fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The summary for this is this resolution authorizes the use of all allowable prior you, year unused levy capacity for levy year twenty twenty-five. This action requires a two-thirds vote and supports essential municipal operations in the twenty twenty-six budgets.
This is not really a new thing. This is part two of the first thing. Uh, the numbers that will be calculated from this resolution were already figured into the previous agenda item that you just voted on. Director Peter, do you have a better technical explanation of how that works? I'm sorry to make you come up here. Council's not used to seeing a resolution that reaches back to the prior year for property tax levy.
So the, this number is already figured in the tax, the resolution from before, but it's really since last year we went up zero. When we do our state levy limit worksheet, we had forty-five thousand and eighteen dollars, um, unused from last year, which we put into that increase that you just voted on. Um, but to use that, we have to have a special resolution and a two-thirds vote to be able to carry over that unused levy into the new year.
Where did that come from?
What do you mean, where did it?
The unused levy.
Because we didn't raise taxes last year. So it was just the unused portion we didn't use that we could have.
And this does not change the number I shared a few minutes ago about the impact to a two hundred thousand dollar home. Forty-eight dollars more per year or about four dollars more per month for the city's portion.
Any questions or any other questions? If not, then we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waiving and adopt a resolution.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Bill. Any council discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, Amanda.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wawuski.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Okay, on to H. Resolution adopting all 2026 fund budgets for the City of Rivers, Wisconsin fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026. This resolution adopts the 2026 general fund, debt service fund, and all associated special revenue, capital and enterprise fund budgets totaling $41.7 million in appropriations. The resolution also establishes the 2025 bid assessment rate of $1.77 per $1,000 of assessed value to support the 2026 Main Street program budget. Approval of the levy amounts for all taxing jurisdictions is included as part of overall budget adoption. Anything else to add?
We had a lengthy work session last week as we reviewed each individual fund for this 2026 budget. I won't repeat the entire presentation, but just a couple highlights. It is 41.7 million. It includes all funds, general fund, all utilities, all debt financing, capital project funds, and all special revenue funds. The general fund operating budget is $12.9 million. It's very much a status quo budget from 2025. It doesn't change much at all. It's a 3% budget. Modest. It's financially prudent. 3% lift to revenue, a 3% lift to expenditures. It supports 125 full-time employees with a 3% cost of living adjustment on January 1st. It includes full funding for MMT Route 1 for another year. In these days, I think 3% is as close to zero as you can get in practical terms, considering inflation and our 3% cost of living adjustment. So after eight weeks of line-by-line review by the personal finance committee, we know this is a very tight general fund.
Any questions? Yes, Adam.
When you say debt service, that is the debt that we took out this year, correct? Just so everyone else knows, that is not debt that we will incur with the capital projects that we are going to be talking about in the springtime. So I know like the hot topic is concession stand. When we talk about debt service here, this is debt we already took out in the spring of this year that hits tax rolls for this tax season, not future debt.
The city council is not being asked to take on any new debt tonight.
Correct.
And there's no final approval of the concession stand on tonight's agenda either, just a discussion.
If there's no other questions, unless there is, we just need a motion in a second for council discussion.
I'll make a motion waiving and adopt a resolution.
Thank you, Mark. Second by? Thank you, Doug. Council discussion. Go ahead, Mark.
I believe previously our discussion of G and F basically covered the approval, right? Talking about the same forward, but technically already.
With also including the debt service fund.
And they approved debt service fund. We only approved the general fund.
Feature, we haven't discussed that yet. That's.
No, this is the debt we already took out, Mark, from this year. That's not future debt.
But that was covered with the levy fund previously, no?
No, we did the general fund.
Well, the council previously approved the levy. Now we're being asked to approve the budget. I guess we could lump those together in the future.
Any discussion from council? None. We'll do a roll call vote. Amanda.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimelunas?
I just want to make, is your question, I, I know I shouldn't probably do this, but you're saying that when we voted for the levy, we basically covered this.
That's, that was my.
At this point, the levy, the revenues have been approved. Now we're asking you to approve the budget, which is the rest of it.
Sorry, what's that?
Give that, I.
Scott Secmesser?
Aye.
Adam Wawuski? Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to I. Neshota Beach concession stand renovation project funding option. So summary of this, for several weeks, the city has been considering in various levels of renovation for the Neshota Beach concession stand, ranging from a bare minimum health department code update to a full demolition and rebuild. Various options presented, including different funding models, project size, and scope. The middle ground option is a major interior renovation while retaining the original building footprint and architectural style. The room tax commission, which has statutory control over tax revenue generated by hotel stays, has approved $75,000 over three years to contribute to the project. In addition, the room tax commission has committed an additional two years of $25,000 per year for a total of $125,000 over five years if the city is unsuccessful at getting a WEDC vibrant spaces grant. The city staff recommendation is to pursue the middle ground option as a balanced approach that will see the actual city tax investment for this project to be estimated at $130,000, well below any initial projections. This would double restroom capacity, improve the interior of the concession stand, and enhance the rear picnic shelter area into a three-season space. This maintains historical charm, creates individual and family changing rooms, while also increasing much-needed revenue. So the recommended action is a motion to direct city staff, and we don't have to go with this, but to proceed within the Neshota Beach concession stand, major renovation project for 2026. The total project would not exceed $520,000, with the total city borrowing to support the project not to exceed $256,000, and the actual city tax investment not to exceed $131,000 after room tax contributions. So first off, any questions? Kyle, did I miss anything?
No, 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 you're good. And Mike, I know you're raring to go, but before, before you go into it, if I could just tee it up a little more. So previously, we framed these up into option one, option two, and option three. Option one is a bare minimum. Option three is demolish and rebuild. At the council meeting in early October, October 6th, the council unanimously approved staff towards, marching towards option two, which is a major renovation option. We've only been working at this since early October, and that amount the city shares gone down to about 130K, which is far below any earlier expectations or projections. Last week, the council heard an alternative funding model from the room tax commission that could result in a brand-new building. So tonight's just to check in with council to see if you want us to continue marching towards option two, like we have been, as previously directed, or if you want us to pump the brakes on that and focus on option three, which was talked about last week, using a revenue bond to finance a full rebuild. That's pretty much all it is tonight. No final approvals on the agenda tonight, just a discussion.
Mike, anything else to add?
I really don't have a whole lot to add, other than what I provided you guys in the packets. If you have any questions, please ask and happy to answer. Hopefully, we'll put together a pretty solid package, funding package. The, the big grant is the, the state of Wisconsin's non-state infrastructure grant program, which is very promising for us. We would not hear if we received that grant until early spring likely. So if we didn't get that, then we've got a whole nother discussion about what do we do if we didn't get that. But seems like a promising opportunity.
Any questions for Mike? Yes, Tim.
I see in this print here that there's a cooking hood in there. I think that's a terrible option. It's, it has a picture of a cooking area and then it has hood over it.
I think that was just a placeholder. I, I have no intent of putting a hood in there. And Tim's looking at the, the floor plan layout of a proposed interior renovation. Yeah, I should, I should get that taken out. Good catch. That's, yeah, I wasn't. If, if the city's operating the concession stand, I have no intent of installing it. Whichever direction council tells us to march in option one, option two, which we've been heading, or option three, which was pitched last week, we're going to keep heading that way and sharing updates along the way, like this. This is what transparency looks like, sharing updates along the way, returning in springtime with a fully funded project after the project is bid, with actual real construction numbers. We haven't even let this out for bid yet because we don't know exactly which direction we're going. We think we're marching towards option two, but we'll go out to bid and we'll come back with a concrete proposal in spring, like we've been saying all along.
For public awareness, this maintains the structure of the building as it exists. It's not a new build. It's just making the improvement to the existing physical structure. This, it's.
Interior.
Interior and the back exterior too.
Correct. If we think about it, the, the renovation suggestions for just a concession stand, the smallest package, is $43,000. If we can pull off $130,000 total investment, completely redo the restrooms, and expand our season on that picnic shelter for $130,000, we've met all of our goals that we wanted to do for the Neshota Beach master plan and improving that, that building at quite a reasonable price. Be able to double restroom capacity, make it more user-friendly, hopefully get heating and screen, roll-down screens on the back patio, back picnic shelter that gets us into May. We're slow to warm up around here. We get May, hopefully in our season, definitely September, which we're currently not renting. And then likely even into October, there's an opportunity to gain more rentals with that shelter.
Adam?
I think it's a good idea to continue to explore this. We don't know exactly what it's going to be, but according to this, not to exceed 131,000, that doesn't mean that it will be anything on the tax rolls. There, there's opportunities for us to go and find grants and do the same thing we did across the street at Central Park East, where, or West, where, where we found people that were invested in this project and wanted to contribute to this project. So I mean, there is no guarantee that we're going to spend anything. There's no guarantee it's going to be 131. I think it's the right thing to do is to explore this and continue to explore this, show the public what it's going to look like and the benefits of this. And then before we decide that, hey, we're going to borrow this money and we're going to actually do this, that's when we're going to take a vote, when we're, when we're able to share this stuff with the public. And I know I got the question today is why not do the, the smaller build or the, just fix up the, the basic thing? And the, the answer is because this is a very old building. We need to increase the restroom capacity, and that changes the whole complexity of this building. So if you do the $50,000 remodel now and then a couple of years, we say, hey, we really do need extra restrooms, or now the infrastructure is actually totally failing us and we have to rip this all up, you're going to end up ripping out that whole $50,000 Band-Aid you put to reconstruct it to the way it looks here, where sinks and everything get moved around to fit the extra additional restrooms into the building. Everything gets changed. So all the plumbing, all the stuff you just did, you're going to rip out and you're going to redo again. And I think the best plan forward is to continue on looking at it. There's no guarantee it's going to happen. But I, I think if we can put a good solid plan together and show the public, we give them an opportunity to say, yeah, we want this, no, we don't, and then move forward from there. But right now, we don't really have a whole lot to show.
I just think that there are things that have to happen for the concession stand. And for 130, and nothing is, Adam, nothing is certain. We all know that. But I think for that amount of money, and I'll tell you, if we don't have that, we'll find it. And it might be donations. It might be, there's other ways to do it. Maybe there's another grant out there for us. You know, but I think for $131,000 to take care of the kitchen, bring it up to code, bathrooms, and then enclosing, temporarily enclosing the back. I, I want to say patio too, but. I, I, you know, and I, I know that we've been looking at maybe building a venue, you know, that people would use for, for weddings or receptions or business conferences or family reunions. That's down the road. Just let it go down the road. And maybe when we get a little bit more serious about if and when we build a, a visitor center, incorporate that venue into the, you know, try and do it that way. But right now, we just got to fix up the damn building. Just let us do that and we can go for the gingerbreading somewhere else in the future.
Want to stress, I think the modest improvements to the shelter area was one of the reasons that the room tax was aggressively supported. We got $125,000 from them because improving that shelter area behind the concession stand, we may get more rental activity, we get more family reunions, even other events that could occur in that sheltered area that will help overall room tax and tourism and everything else in our community. So I think this is a logical step forward.
I don't like it that the total is $520,000 because we voted not to go over $450,000. I, I just, I'm not going to vote for this.
Adam first.
The one thing I did forget to, to leave out is I'm not in favor of any revenue bond. So I know the room tax has promised money. Some of it was on revenue bond. I'm not a fan of that. I, I don't think we should weigh the risk and have it come back to the taxpayers should the room tax fall short on that. So that, that would be one thing I would not want the room tax when they're committing their money. I don't want a revenue bond attached to it. It's not one that we are responsible for.
I reiterate, and this proposal is not a revenue bond. They know that they're done with supporting Central Park this year. And so if we continue on a very similar trajectory or even fairly stable room tax income, that they'd be able to, they've already approved it, saying that they can accommodate five years of $25,000 of cash.
But I want to stress, the use of revenue bonds is a good tool for the community because it eliminates the taxpayer funding of developments. A lot of cities use revenue bonds, so we shouldn't blackball that completely. Future, we may be able to do revenue bonds.
Go ahead, Doug.
Okay, I, I believe the jump from $450,000 to $520,000 was due to enclosing the rear shelter, correct?
Correct.
So that, that's a big value add right there. Just to get more changing rooms and bathroom facilities for families. Local kids use that a lot. I mean, it's not just for tourists. That's a big plus to the community to get additional bathrooms and changing spaces. So I think it's well worth the.
Well, we do need a motion because we should be doing a motion first before we pass the box ourselves. So, no, not yet, right?
I want to clarify one thing for anybody that's still watching on TV. I have seven phone calls on this topic today, seven. Residents called me, and I, it's great when residents reach out to us instead of social media. But they wanted to know why, how much money was in 2026 budget for this project? None. And $0 in 2026 budget for this project. It will be financed over 10 years, and the council would vote on it with an annual capital borrowing list that they prove every March, April.
Yeah, we got a lot of emails about that today, about that too today. So. So we're looking for a motion.
I'll make.
Unless you have a question for.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Over how you got those numbers here on.
Which numbers, Bill? $520. It needs to be explained a little bit. So I think the $520 was a roundup on your agenda. So my right now total projected total project cost was this table in your packet. So the left table is the Shota Pavilion projected cost. So Hammond Construction gave us an estimate for the restroom and concession interiors to be redone for $360,636. That was just a, out of the kindness of the heart, they gave us an estimate, so we'd have to go to bid. It's advantageous to us that we're saying that a construction company gave us an estimate at this amount, and hopefully people want to beat that amount when we go to bid. It could be more expensive. We don't know. Picnic Shelter, three seasons improvements. Hammond Construction had conversations with the contractor that did, that built, I'm blanking on the name, but the picture that you have in your packet is an Aaron's facility in Brillian. And so Hammond spoke with that contractor and gave us a ballpark estimate on that as well. And then I added small chunks of money, relatively small signage and outdoor furniture, concession appliances to round out the inside of that. So that all added up to 510, 636 was total project cost. The table on the right is the funding sources. The table on the right is the funding sources. How would we compile all that? First one would be fifty percent of the project from the state of Wisconsin's two-year budget. They pump money into infrastructure projects that are not a part of the state, the state government. Often what I've seen in those grants are tourism type of activities, museums. Community type of recreation facilities that they push that money into. So it seems like we're a good candidate for that grant. The next number is the city. So I'm going down that tables, two hundred and fifty five thousand for the state grant, hundred and thirty thousand. And some change from city capital borrowing, which we could test the waters on a fundraising campaign for a portion of that if we wanted to. The next line down is room tax commission. So they have confirmed twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight. They will give twenty five thousand dollars per year to the project. So we will have to borrow that money upfront and then they pay us every year and we could pay down a chunk of that debt with that twenty five thousand. The last one is Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation grant or additional room tax. So W E D C grants, this is their Vibrant Spaces grant for fifty thousand dollars. Unsure how well we fit that one because they tend to give those more to downtown type of Main Street activities. But I think it's still worth taking a shot at. I told that to Room Tax Commission, they said, all right, go after W E D C. And that fifty thousand dollar grant, if you don't get it, we will give you an additional two years of twenty five thousand dollars per year. That to cover that fifty thousand. So that gets us to a total project cost of five hundred and ten thousand. The city borrowing at this point would have to be two hundred and fifty five thousand upfront. But remember, we're getting room tax to pay off some of that debt. So the actual city property tax investment of borrowing would be a hundred and thirty, around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Mike kind of answered or alluded to some of it. I was just going to explain the total city borrowing versus the actual city investment. Because when residents see that total city borrowing, they think that the city's on the hook for two hundred and fifty five thousand. That would be incorrect. That that is money that is being borrowed, that's not paying under general obligation, which is what the taxpayers pay. In this table, it shows the general obligation would be a hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. For the general obligation borrowing, which goes back to the taxpayers. The two fifty five, the rest of that comes from other sources. In this case, would be Room Tax Commission and the W E D C grant. The one thing I do want to point out, and I don't know if this has been talked about, who's taking on the interest of the room tax loan?
So I would assume that that would have to be the city probably in that situation taking on that. The W E D C grant would help us with that because we would get hit with fifty thousand dollars of cash in the first year or before. Perhaps even before we even borrow the money. So the W E D C grant would help us in terms of cash and in the interest.
So then we would have some interest to pay on twenty seven, twenty eight for borrowing in those two years. Because twenty twenty six, we would receive in twenty twenty six, should this project move forward. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So there is still some some, I don't want to say hidden, but there's some other fees that that could affect. The property taxpayer besides the one thirty that we see listed on the table because there'd be some.
Which I don't know if I've ever calculated interest into my capital projects. So this is not kind of a standard practice for us, I guess. The Cassie and the city manager would do that.
Right, we do for general obligation. We see that when we when we go to borrow. This wouldn't be general obligation borrowing. So that's why I'm asking if they're going to, because are they borrowing the money? Are we borrowing the money?
They're not borrowing the money.
Here would be some interest, but it is very low interest rates, right, that we can access through the state, right?
Well, it just be our, this would be our normal capital borrowing process for getting interest rates. I don't know what the what it was.
But this also does not include any fundraising opportunities. That Mike may go after as far as naming rights, as far as pledges. From people in the city that may want to contribute towards this project as well. So that one thirty one, if this goes through in spring, could be significantly reduced by anyone that feels the need to contribute to the project.
And or additional grants because Mike's good at writing grants. No pressure. Sorry, I didn't throw that on you, but. Okay, we're so we're still needing a motion in a second. I thought Mark made him. Did Mark make a motion? Then someone had a question.
Oh, gotcha.
But then to clarify, it's recommend the action, should I say five ten or five twenty?
We're rounding at this point. Five twenty would be good.
A motion to direct city staff to proceed with the Shota Beach concession stand major renovation project for twenty twenty six. In the total amount not to exceed, hopefully it's five ten, but five twenty. With the total city borrowing to support project not to exceed five hundred and fifty six thousand and then two fifty six. And the actual city tax investment not to exceed a hundred and thirty one after all contribution.
A second, Matt. Thank you, Darla. Any council discussion?
Just point out that this is significantly reduced from the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar plan where the city was not going to. Exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was the one we originally agreed upon. Yes, the total amount is more, but the burden on the taxpayer actually went down from two fifty to one thirty one. Should this pass in spring.
This is good collaboration with the community. This is how you bake a project and you get it to completion in the open, in the light, where everybody can see it. We're going to continue having these check-ins with council to make sure we're heading in the right direction. And as things come up and we have new things or we have a different funding proposal, we'll do all that out in the open.
Excellent. Okay, then if there's nothing else, we'll do a roll call vote. Amanda.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Schimmelus.
No.
Scott Stackman sir.
Aye.
Adam Mahusky.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to Jay, Neshota Beach concession stand operations, business plan options. The city staff present three operational paths paths for the Neshota Beach concession stand. Mike, do you just want to go through the options instead of me just reading them? You okay with that or should I just read through?
I'll just go through. Option, so we've been having a discussion about the revenue, where is it going from the concession stand at the Shota Beach? Right now it supports special events. That is the status quo option one. We continue to use that net revenue, which this year was just over ten thousand dollars to support special events. Which is a combination of a lot of things, which includes bands on the beach, concerts in the park. Was Friday night concerts last year, it was fireworks. Then there's a few other special events, but they end up making money to help the budget as well. So that's kind of status quo. The next option would be to pull that revenue from special events and put it towards the general fund, continue support operations. That puts us in a very difficult position for fireworks and bands on the beach and concerts in the park by losing that revenue. So my suggestion is to go to trying to split revenue in some way. First ten thousand dollars, what we can make off the concession stand, let's commit it to special events. We can continue to do the core special events. And then let's get creative with our the beach paid parking trial. Perhaps be selling some beer at the beach. And we we think there are a few things that we can do to squeak out a little bit more revenue out of concession stand the way it stands. With some prepared foods that we would cook at the senior centers, certified kitchen. And bring it, bring to the concession stand and hold that temp. So we think there's some things that we can do to squeeze out a little bit more revenue. That's option three. Going back to option two, we would be very hard pressed to continue to fund bands on the beach. Fireworks and concerts in the park without that revenue. I would very much want to prioritize our staff into taking care of those instead of running the concession stand. In that situation, we would go to somebody to lease that concession stand from us and operate it. In the past, we've made, at least in twenty twenty one. We had a ten percent share of the revenue came to us and that was right around thirty five hundred dollars for the season. And as far as the year before I started, as far as I'm aware, the concession stand hours were significantly less. Consistency than what we have now with us running it. So I started June twenty twenty two, we'd already made that decision before I even started that we were going to run the concession stand going into twenty twenty two. Each year we've gotten much better at running it. We've added costs to that in terms of some full-time labor. All the part-time labor that runs the concession stand comes out of that budget. So it's it's pretty well covering its own costs for the operations and making some money that we can put back into special events.
Questions for Mike?
Concert beer sales, those are done by by different groups where to get the licenses?
So currently Rotary is the one that's been selling beer at Bands on the Beach. They have a insurance package that is for like their regional network. So they don't have to go take out additional insurance coverage to do those beer sales. So it works out pretty well for them. In the past, the city had looked into it. And our former insurance carrier told us we needed to take out additional insurance to sell beer. Our new insurance carrier says we do not need to take out additional insurance coverage to sell beer. So it actually makes us viable for us to do it now because we're not taking out additional insurance coverage.
But I have something, I didn't mean the concession stand. It says you have under for concert beer sales and concession beer sales. Because I'm dead telling you the concession stand have an alcohol license of its own.
We don't actually have to have an alcohol license. So Amanda's investigated with the state, we do not have to hold a license.
Beer and wine. We're not going to be selling liquor there.
Or for selling beer.
It's a different type of license. It's issued through the state. The municipality cannot issue themselves a license.
So I did split those out thinking if we're selling at concerts and if we have some standard hours of selling beer out of the concession stand. We may be doing both, we may be doing it from a tent next to the concerts during concerts. And then at other times of peak weekends, we could be doing it out of the concession stand.
But they all have that bar tunters license and stuff or?
They'll have to be eighteen.
That go in a designated drinking area or is that just like grab a beer and hand it off to the next person kind of thing?
No, it would be wherever is the license premise.
Any other questions for Mike? Yes, Adam.
Um, I, well, this was just, I guess, probably for everyone, not not just Mike. I'll just kind of say it. I I don't think any of this money should go back to special events. I think it should all go into the general fund. We talked about the issues we have with the general fund and our shortfalls. This year we used that money, that revenue going into it to help balance our general fund. And when we give fines out from the police department, we don't put that into the K nine fund or we don't put that into special events. We put that back into the general fund. Every time we do things, we put it back to the general fund and this should be no different. Our general fund struggles. We struggle to pay for the maintenance at the beach, which costs us dearly. And the money that we make at the beach therefore should go back to the general fund to continue helping us. I don't think it should be split any which way direction. I think it belongs in the general fund. We talk about needs, we talk about wants. And we brought that up, you know, several times today and throughout the years. Obviously, special events are a want, not a need. We need to balance our general fund. That's an obligation that we have. And then that is a source of revenue that we should be using to balance it, just like we just got done doing.
If we want to, and my thought is that if we want to continue. If we pull the the funding from special events and we want to continue bands on the beach and the fireworks. We have to sell beer and we would prioritize that to be able to fund those types of activities. And we would be leasing the concession stand, which would make less money.
I think if we pulled away. The ten, the first ten thousand dollars to create special events like bands and things, we would hurt our overall. Community concession sales and we'd also be a major disappointment to the community. Because we get hundreds and hundreds of people that come for those special events. And not only sitting and listening to events, spend money in town. Stake about special.
Any questions for Mike?
I meant, I just know that Parks and Rec has had to make a lot of difficult decisions with special events and scaling back on a lot of things. So I just think that that is something to also consider when we're looking at where we get some money for these special events. Especially things like the fireworks that does bring a lot of families together here in Two Rivers. So just something to think about.
Any questions for Mike? Wasn't fireworks fully funded, Mike? In your spreadsheet on donations? It was ten out of eleven, if I remember correctly. So fireworks are pretty much completely funded. Year mark donations that go directly to the fireworks. And the same thing is with the ones that fall short mainly are the concerts. That are not funded through donations enough to continue them running. So in my opinion, you don't have to cut them out. You just can't afford the three, four thousand dollar bands. You can't have a five thousand dollar road trip. You you can't have a thirty five hundred dollar spicy Thai band. You you need to scale back. There's other bands out there. That that you don't have to spend as much money on. And you don't have to cut them out. There's plenty of bands that that'll play for thousand, fifteen hundred. And those are the bands that we're going to have to go after.
Uh, just to clarify, fireworks was a short one thousand five hundred and seventy. Thirteen thousand expenses, eleven, five and sponsorships.
The general fund also pays for one point five salaries for special events. We do have a special events coordinator and that person also has an assistant that that take on these special events. So again, another reason why more of that money needs to come back to the general fund, that the rest of us taxpayers are paying these people to put these special events on.
But I believe that's on a full-time job. She also does other things too.
That's, I'm, says online. That that's the job description, right on the city website.
It's recreation and special events.
It's a recreation supervisor, special events is what it says online.
Both things, yes.
And then she has an assistant, correct? Yes.
That's not a hundred percent of her job though, is it?
Hundred percent of her job is recreation and special events.
Any other questions for Mike? Otherwise, we.
What is the halftime position then?
Uh, special events support, helping with the fundraising, also helps with rec programs. Yeah.
You can almost say there's one full-time position between the half and the and a half of. Would be fairly accurate. So it's about one position.
Questions for Mike? They're looking for a motion of some kind.
I'll make a motion to direct city staff to proceed with option three to retain. City-run operations at the concession stand with an expanded menu and beer sales. Splitting revenues between the special events fund and the general fund.
Darla, do we have a second?
Second emotion.
Thank you, Mark. Council discussion.
I just want to say one more time, if it's a want or a need.
As long as they got a designated space where they're just not handing bureau to whoever, then I'm okay with it. Just rules are rules.
Anyone else? That's a discussion.
And one more. Don't forget, we have a budget shortfall coming next year of over six hundred thousand dollars, according to our city manager and the general fund. By not putting the money in there, that doesn't help solve that problem. Not at all. We used it this year to help solve the problem. So you got to do that. So you got to figure another five thousand out. To make up the difference, plus the six thousand that we're coming short on, or six hundred thousand that's projected to be short on.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing else, we'll do a roll call vote. Amanda.
Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shimalunas.
No.
Scott Stackmesser.
Aye.
Adam Mahusky.
No.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for that. That now leads us to number twelve, city manager's report. Anything extra to add for this evening?
Two quick things. It snowed. Uh, winter city parking ban is now in effect. Please do not park on the streets between one AM and nine AM. We'll keep this winter parking ban in effect for a few days, um, until we're comfortable that there's no more snow coming in and then we'll lift it. Today, police patrol started a two-day warning period on this in which they will only issue warning citations and not actual citations. Uh, they issued like seventy-five warnings like April night. Uh, so this two-day warning period is over tomorrow. So if you're unsure if you're allowed to park on the street, assume you cannot. And please call us at City Hall or check our Facebook page if you want to be sure. And then lastly, the Two Rivers Hometown Christmas Parade has been rescheduled to this coming weekend, Saturday, December sixth. The parade steps off at five thirty PM. So bundle up and then we'll see you down there.
Or the parking van. Off my train of thought.
Isn't it a one hour, one hour parking during the van?
Oh, is the parking van information on the Two River City webpage as well, correct? Or not?
I don't know exactly where.
It will be women suspended and then yes.
Okay.
What I just saw online was different than we used to have.
As a fact for now, please don't park on the street. That's all.
Okay, uh, for information only, uh, we have a city council regular meeting Monday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM. And then we also have a city council work session from Monday, December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM. And as Kyle said, the parade is next week, Saturday. Last time I said Friday. Um, we do have closed session tonight. Hopefully it won't take too long, but with the city council reserves a right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Uh, tonight we're talking about a performance of management employee. And then the second thing is the city council reserves a right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Tonight, uh, also discussing a potential litigation against a resident. Um, for that, we just need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Shannon, second by. Thank you, Tim. Any council discussion? Um, we'll do a roll call vote. Amanda.
Scott Stackmesser.
Aye.
Adam Mahusky.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Mark Bitner. Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
And Bonnie stepped out.
That's me.
Yeah, you were first.
Mr. President, can we take?